Here.
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 Carlson. Felder.
Here.
Citro?
Here.
Miranda?
Here.
And Manis Gacko?
Here. Councilmember Carlson is going to be just a few minutes late, but he will be joining us this evening. Mr. Shelby, if you'd like to make those remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Tampa City Council. Today is Monday, August 17, 2020, and this virtual meeting of the City Council tonight for quasi-judicial hearings and legislative hearings is being held in accordance with the declarations and provisions of the Governor's Executive Order 20-69 and 20-179, as they may be further extended, and emergency rules of procedure as adopted and amended by the City Council. It is being conducted by remote participation or video teleconferencing, which is referred to by the State of Florida statutes and rules as communications media technology. Public and citizens of the City of Tampa are able to watch this and view this meeting on cable TV, Spectrum Channel 640, Frontier Channel 15, and on the Internet at Council, the information relating to participating in tonight's meeting is available to the public on the City Council's webpage at tampagov.net/city-council. And there are quick links there to get the public all the information and instructions that are needed on how to participate this evening. You have, the public has the opportunity to submit comments to you in writing for tonight's hearings. Those have been made available and distributed and uploaded to Sire, which is available to the public at tampagov.net/Agendas. And if they click on the date and if they click on the particular item number, they will be able to see all the written comments and all the background material that have been made available. That being said, Mr. Chairman, I turn the meeting to you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. We have quite a few items in the agenda. We have a walk-on. Ms. Johnson-Velez, were you bringing that now, or we're just going right to number one?
I can do that if you like, Ms. Velez, unless you wish.
Miranda.
Okay, well, thank you. Council, you're in possession of a memo from Ms. Johnson-Velez dated the 14th of August. It is regarding a resolution for City Council to reschedule a public hearing for a non-ad valorem assessment for the Kbar Ranch Parcels E and F. The reason this is being walked on tonight is there are time constraints and time deadlines needed to be met, which is why this is asked to be rescheduled tonight. It is frankly a ministerial item tonight. A public hearing is going to be advertised, and you will have that opportunity to inform the public that way. The only thing you need to do tonight, Council, is to move the resolution.
All right.
Move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion to move this resolution from Councilmember Goode. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Citro. Roll call vote. Ms. Miranda.
We don't have to make a motion open to hearing or nothing.
No, sir, this is just a walk-on for a resolution setting of the hearing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, roll call vote on this then. Motion from Councilmember Goode, second from Councilman Citro.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
And Gacko?
Yes.
Carlson? Citro?
Yes.
And Miranda?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie Carson, be an absent.
All right, we go into the public hearings. Mr. Shelby, would it be appropriate to open everything now, items 1 through 10?
Ms. Wells, did you want to address some items preliminarily?
Thank you, Mr. Shelby. This is Kate Wells, Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Chairman, members of City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to address these issues. It was brought to my attention late this afternoon that with respect to the adoption and transmittal public hearings on the plan amendments, items 1 through 10 on tonight's agenda were not properly noticed for consideration. My greatest apologies. This is not any oversight by the City Clerk's Office. This was due to a miscommunication between departments. And I am requesting that these items be rescheduled for a later date so the hearing may be properly advertised.
All right, do you have a date in mind at this time?
With the calendar that's been established and the 10 application max, I think we would, if we don't want to exceed that maximum number at this point, I believe we are looking at October 22 as a possible evening meeting, unless we want to schedule a separate hearing or add an evening meeting to your current schedule.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Goode.
As well as that was items 1 through 10?
1 through 10.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
All right. What about moving up to October 22 instead of adding an extra meeting? Being that these are not, you know, complicated items. Mr. Shelby, what are your thoughts on moving it to October 22? You're muted, Mr. Shelby.
My apologies. Ms. Wells, would you recommend, or is it necessary that Council choose the date tonight and set the date for rescheduling? Is that appropriate to do that tonight?
That is my recommendation so that it will be clear to what will be noticed and the date of what will be noticed for.
All right, then.
Council, your only other option would be, and this is something we're going to be discussing under new business, perhaps having a night meeting on October 1. But if Council wishes to set it and have it taken into account on the 22nd, as well as I haven't reviewed what's being scheduled for that date, but I'm sure that would be appropriate if you think so. I have no opinion one way or the other, frankly. So it's Council's choice and as well as recommendation.
And you did remind me that an item we're going to be discussing later is the potential rescheduling of the September 28 hearings. When that schedule was adopted by Council, we were not aware that that evening is Yom Kippur. And to the extent that Council would like to reschedule those, one of the options available to Council, if they don't want to add those items to either September 24th or October 8th, are the current evening meetings that are scheduled. One possibility was to add an evening meeting on October 1 to consider, I believe, five items that need to be rescheduled. And that certainly is another possibility for the plan amendments, would be to place them on that night. If Council wants to have another.
It's an interesting sound. Maybe it just was an echo. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think Mr. Dingfelder can be recognized for a while, sir. Have you seen him or not?
Councilman Ding Felder.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of these items, what, five or six, seven of them are just those park amendments, which I don't think are really particularly pressing. It appears that a couple of these are specific to parcels and/or petitioners' requests to have, you know, to have them heard, private amendments. I think that's at least one. Ms. Wells, what, from an advertising perspective, what's the earliest that these can be heard? And could we just do it on another Monday?
Thank you, Councilman Ding Felder. The advertisement for the first public hearing is a minimum of seven days in advance of the hearing. I don't know what the deadline would be for the Clerk's Office, given that we don't have newspapers that are issued at the same regularity that the newspapers. So I would need input from the Clerk's Office as to what their deadline would be for submittal of the advertisement to the newspaper.
Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up. I guess my concern is that, you know, we say we want to help the business community continue on these things, and some of these have been carried over no fault of our own, but just because what's been happening, you know, for quite a while. So I want to, you know, if we can dispose of these things on a Monday, just like we scheduled this for a Monday night, I don't have an objection to it.
Hi, Kate. This is Solene Lucas with the City Clerk's Office. I just want to give you feedback on the deadline. In order for our publication to be made on a Friday, the deadline is the Wednesday prior.
All right. Ms. Wells, did you hear that from the clerk?
Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Yes, sir.
Not to complicate this, because we were going to bring this up under new business, but if Council does or would like to intend to move the meetings on the evening of Yom Kippur on Monday, the 28th, one option is to add the night meeting on a Thursday after a council regular session at 5:01, and then we can put these on at the same time. Otherwise, Council, I don't know which Monday nights are available before that time. I'll remind you, Council, that we do have September is budget month, budget public hearing month. And certainly that is something that adds to your number of meetings already. So if Council wishes, we can look into between the course of the, yeah, tonight and the meeting, I could look at the calendar. I don't know if I can figure out what's what where, but the options that we have would be either adding another meeting on another day, a Monday, or adding a meeting on the CRA week on a Monday, which would be, what would that be, maybe perhaps the 4th or the, I guess, I have to look at the calendar. Or to put it on the night of the 1st, or to put on a CRA day. Now, actually, Ms. Wells, the 8th is available, but that would be a week later than adding a meeting on the night of the 1st. Would you agree?
Are you talking about the 8th of October?
Yes.
That would be available as well. I was looking at Monday evenings in light of what Councilman Ding Felder mentioned, in the event that, I think the soonest we could schedule this for a Monday night meeting is the evening of September 7, in order for the clerk to have sufficient time to place the advertisement.
September 7 is Labor Day.
No wonder it's available. So then you would also have the evening of the 14th, but I realize that you also have budget hearings on September 16.
And generally, Council is very busy budget week.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Vera, go ahead.
Thank you. And I was disconnected there for a little bit. With regards to the 14th, I haven't looked at my calendar, but these appear, as Councilman Ding Felder said, to be non, I don't want to say nonremarkable, but not too complex. I don't think, so long as everybody is, you know, disciplined and whatnot on the council side, and things go by relatively quickly, that it would be too much of a problem to have it on the 14th. I have to look at my calendar, but in other words, if that's in the midst of budget season, call me a naive moron, but I think we're okay. Call me a naive moron.
On what day, sir? The 14th?
I believe it was the 14th that was mentioned.
And just to remind you, Council, you also have a meeting on the 17th. So that would be two night meetings that week and a day meeting on that Thursday. May I ask about the CRA day on September 10, the evening of September 10? Ms. Wells, could you take a look at that, please?
On the evening of September 10, we currently have six resounding hearings scheduled, but it's my understanding that a couple of items that will be considered on Thursday night's agenda, they're asking for continuance to that evening as well.
I see. Well, Council, I would, and I respect Councilman Vera's recommendation, but I will tell you, from a logistics standpoint, the creation of a virtual video meeting is a very labor-intensive operation for staff. And it does create a lot of complexity, especially when you have more than one meeting, two meetings a week. So if it's humanly possible, especially in a budget week, because my experience is that Council has a lot of consultations and meetings that week, Councilman Vera. So if it's possible to avoid having three meetings in one week, and when we have tried to reschedule these, to the best of our ability, we've attempted to do that. This is one of the weeks that we do have three meetings this week. We have today, and we have two meetings on Thursday. So I don't want to prolong this. I know this is taking a long time, and this is something that we can either discuss later and move along, and I can go offline and see what we can do, or Council can just make a determination. One of the factors, Council, I guess a threshold question for you, is inadvertently, Council, meetings were scheduled on the 28th, which is Yom Kippur. And traditionally, Council has not scheduled any hearings or meetings on the Jewish High Holy Days. And suppose, from what I understand, my understanding is that a constituent brought that to Council's attention or to staff's attention, and that's why we're giving Council the option to decide. It's early enough now to move the notice date to be able to have people not have to renotice. So if it's Council's pleasure to move that from Yom Kippur, the day would be the date to do that. Otherwise, it would be too late. So if Council wishes to keep that date for the five hearings that are scheduled, it can. If Council wishes to move them, then we can certainly move them and these plan amendments to the same night. So what's Council's pleasure?
Councilman Miranda.
Thank you much. If I recall what Ms. Wells said, she was looking at September 10, and she said there were six other quasi-judicial hearings, which she thought two of them were going to get out or ask for continuance. That would leave four. And if I recall what Mr. Ding Felder said earlier, that the, and along with Mr. Vera, that these 10 meetings should not be those that are being, in one way or another, mass people coming in on one side or the other. You know, rather quick here on 1 through 10. And at 5:01 on the day, getting behind us. Whether you make three meetings in one week or whatever you want, from now to the first of next year, you're going to have the same amount of meetings. So it makes no difference to me if I have three in one week or another week.
All right.
The 10th of September, if it's possible.
Is that a motion?
Of course.
Excuse me, Chair. For September 10, we do have 11 second readings from the August 6 meeting.
And how long do they take?
This is Kate Wells. With regard to September 10, what I meant to say is we have six quasi-judicial hearings scheduled that evening, and I believe that we may have two more from this week being continued to that evening. So it's not that we're taking away from the 10th, we're adding to the 10th, just for clarification.
That's not the way I interpret it, but I appreciate your concern.
And members of Council, Mr. Chairman, please be reminded that now that we have gone virtual and to video, you are not doing any quasi-judicial hearings on your morning meetings. So therefore, all your second readings are going to be showing up at night. And if any of them were controversial then at first reading, there could be very well people there to speak at the second reads as well. We have yet to do second reads in this format, video, since we've gone full virtual. So I can't really predict how such a night would go until we do it.
All I know, if we keep on this way, we'll be here and not even, we'll be in October, we won't finish this one that we're doing today.
All right, is there a motion on a set date of when to reschedule these items?
For me, any day is fine with me. Mr. Chairman, pick the date you choose, or we go with that one.
Mr. Chairman, why don't, why don't we put it all till the end of the meeting? Let's just move forward with the items we have, and then legal counsel can send emails to each other and figure it out.
Okay, sounds good. Having said that, we'll move on to item number 11. We need to open these public hearings, 11 through 15. Can I get a motion to that effect?
Open.
Chairman. There are motions to open the public hearings, 11 through 15, by Councilman Goode, second by Councilman Miranda. Roll call vote.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
And Gacko?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Miranda?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Item number 11.
Mr. Chairman, if we may. Mr. Chairman, if we may.
Yes, sir.
Council, we have, and staff, we have a modified procedure, an evolving procedure tonight. What's going to happen is the beginning of each application, we will have everyone on the screen at the same time, so the clerk can view everyone being sworn in. This should occur before staff introduces the application. The process of adding the applicant and participants to the screen may take a little bit of time. So you may need to wait until these people So you may need to wait until these people show up at the screen, Mr. Crew and, and Ms. Mottos, before they are sworn in. And Mr. Chairman, we're going to have to do that for each hearing. So if you bear with us until we make this a habit.
All right, let's swear the folks in and get them all on the screen.
For this particular hearing, item number one.
Applicant Ruth Longdono has access, she just needs to turn her camera and microphone on. Mr. Drew Berry is also present to make public comment on this item.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may inquire of the clerk, have any written material been submitted in this case available, distributed to city council and available to the public?
Yes, we do, and it's already uploaded into Sire for the public viewing and council members as well.
Okay, and I will remind the public, and of course, council knows that those will be received and filed into the record and made part of the record. And certainly, those have been made available to council and can be used for discussion if council so desires. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We will begin, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, council, Ryan Manassi, planning, design and development coordination. Item number 11 is file number REV 20-24. To remind you, this was continued from August 6th to allow the clerk to provide all previous received comments. And planning, transportation, as well as natural resources staff is available for any questions.
All right, do we have any questions? All right, hearing done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilman Ding Felder?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out. And I'm glad that we continued this because, and Mr. Seidro was, did a great job in finding these last, last time we had the council meeting on this issue. But when we went back to look at it, there are quite a few comments from the community. So I just wanted to point that out to council as we're moving into this hearing.
All right, thank you very much, any other questions? No? All right, next up. Who is next to speak on this item?
Okay, good, good evening. Ruth Longdono from 1502 West Bush Boulevard. We are here to request the rezoning from a lot that have to, I want to share my screen if that is possible. Can you see the screen now?
It's loading. Yes, we can, go ahead.
Okay, because I want to be this one a little easy for you to understand, maybe better my English. Because some people have some issues with that. Now, I got to have the presentation for that one. We have, we have in two lots. That is the lot number five, four, and the lot number three. The lot number four is on Seminole Heights Residential Single Family. And the lot number three is on their Seminole Heights Commercial Intensive. We want to resort the lot number four that is on residential to commercial intensive. Okay, this property, as you know, is on, on the, it's on the west of Florida Avenue. This is the property that we are, want to resort. This is what we are, was talking about, the lot number three is already commercial intensive. And the lot number four is residential. The width for that particular piece of land that we want to resort have only 53 feet. The other lot on the same folio number is already resolved, Seminole Heights Commercial Intensive. I want to say something a little bit about the history from Elizabeth Construction. Elizabeth Construction has been on this property that is on the north. About 2008. It was at least this property. From a that was doing the business like granite. Okay, here is maybe, okay. They start leasing the business in 2008. And the prior owner was Mr. Minami, who was operating the granite, the granite company from 2003. He start as owner of the south property on 2017. And that was auto sale, but before the auto sale was also granite company. Because the parking area was important for the business and the protection of some stone products, as also for the neighborhood or all the neighbors. The owner made the decision to find a solution. In order to have the solution, he was, the owner had the demolition of the building where he start in 2008. That is some plans that you can find or some of the opposition leaders that was sent on the prior hearing on the last Monday, on August 6th, on the last Tuesday, I'm sorry. And they gave the new building as part of the solution, but in order to provide more parking space, that is the reason of the, of this rezoning. Okay, as I said before, this is the survey for the, all the property that we want to resort. That's the two lots, this already had one building, and that is already resort commercial intensive. And this is a vacant lot that is the lot number four that we want to resort to commercial intensive for use of more parking spaces. Let me go down here and here. Okay, we have this one ready. Okay, the owner Elizabeth Construction has valued member of Seminole Heights Community, improving the area and being compatible in form, building and structure. The orientation of the area is also the concern of the owner. All this area on Seminole Heights, one, a resort be approved. The owner has to meet all the requirements from the Land Development Code and Florida Building Code. The intention of Elizabeth Construction is to increase the parking area to minimize the use right away. I also mentioned as just a general information that the, sorry, I just say here, okay, the marble are dominated, denominated as stone. And stone is not contaminated, they not contaminate the environment, because it's a, it's natural stone. Also. We need to have that. The, the real impact of commercial intensive use already exists and will continue even if you don't resort, if you don't approve the rezoning. All the impact is already assessed. The rezoning, the only that piece that is only 56 feet, that's got to be, they got to bring to the owner the possibility to have a more parking area. For, to have the right to continue parking, not on the right away, just parking on the property that we got to resort. I think in my opinion, that's got to be really, in my, in my, in my opinion, to support this, this barrier, this, I'm sorry, this rezoning. Has got to release all the problems that maybe, because I was talking with some of the neighborhood. I have some people that support the application. I have people that are next to, next to the, next to the property, to the site, and they have any concern about this one. I found that some people are concerned about the parking. And I think that the rezoning this property got to have the solution for what they have concerning at this moment. Do you have any question?
Do we have any questions from the applicant, Councilman Miranda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My, my question is this, the applicant keeps on making statement that the rezoning area that they're applying for will be only a parking lot, am I correct?
That's correct, because we have, we have, in that particular lot, we have two lots.
Let me finish, please. I just got that first part, the second part is this. Is there any way legally possible, since the applicants made the statement that this is only going to be for parking, that they could never store any other product like granite or anything into the open space?
Ryan Manassi, planning, design and development coordination, I'd like to jump in just to answer the question from staff. Okay, so this is a Euclid rezoning request, so there are no waivers that are allowed for this application, as well as use is not established per this request. So as you recall from the August 6th public hearing in the staff report, it shows you all the permitted uses that are authorized if this were to be approved in the SHCI, which is Seminole Heights Commercial Intensive Zoning District. So again, for the record, I just want to make that very clear, that they can state what they're trying to do, but there's no way to enforce that, and it really shouldn't be, because this is a Euclid rezoning request. So therefore, if it is approved, anything in that SHCI zoning district could be a permitted use.
Thank you, that's what I was going at, you made it much more eloquent than I would have said it.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, can I speak?
Go ahead.
Okay, Ruth Longdono, yes, that is true that the use for the zoning got to be allowed, any use on that particular zoning district. But also, we need to meet all the requirements for the Land Development Code. On the Land Development Code, that is a section for the district, that is the section, the subdivision, I think that is number five from the Land Development Code. And that section on the Land Development Code is a section, a subsection that go to, that I think is the number five. Let me see, I think that is the, they request all the buffers that must to be between the residential uses, between, to the commercial uses. We cannot have any building on that 53 feet that we are requesting for the rezoning. There's no way to have a building on that 53 feet, because with the other lot, the lot number three is already zone commercial intensive. This is two platter lots, we have the platter lot number three and the platter lot number four. The platter lot of the same folio number. The platter lot number three already is commercial intensive, Seminole Commercial Intensive. What happened, that's my question, what happened if the owner decided in the future to still divide the lot because illegal, it's totally legal. I have two lots, you know, they have everything there. The only reason we are requesting the rezoning is to provide more parking spaces. At that time, we need to meet all the requirements from Land Development Code.
All right. Councilman Ding Felder, you wanted to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask the petitioner, you seem pretty articulate in, in these issues in terms of the code and that sort of thing. When you went down to the city and discussed your, your application, probably before you even submitted it. Did, did any of the city staff discuss the difference between a PD, a planned development, or a Euclidian? And, and the reason I say that is, we deal with both of them all the time. The PD provides an opportunity on a site plan, you know, on a piece of paper, on the site plan, for the owner of the property and the future owner of the properties to guarantee what is being said. And Mr. Miranda was directly on point. You know, we have petitioners who are well-intended. It's not that we doubt what you're saying, it's not that we doubt what your property owner is saying, but from a legal perspective, and I've got four legals, legal scholars on the line here. They can all tell, they will all remind us, as did Mr. Manassi, that it's not enforceable. That nothing that you say or your owner says is enforceable if it's Euclidian zoning. If it's a planned development rezoning, then you can provide guarantees. You can talk about noise, you can talk about dust, you can talk about light, you can talk about heavy equipment. You can talk about all those things that frankly, and we can discuss this in a little while, that many of your neighbors have written in and have concerns about. So I just was wondering, and that's a very long question, whether or not you're aware of the planned development process, and why didn't you go for the PD process? I know it costs a little more and it takes a little bit longer.
Ruth Longdono, again, yeah, yeah, I understand your point. But I think that all of knows, knows what means plan development. Plan development means that only you can choose on that site plan, on that specific use, that got to be a custom use. He got to lose all the other one uses on the other zoning that already is a Seminole Heights Commercial Intensive. If I resort only that piece that is 53 feet wide by 120. I have the question for Mr. Ryan, that is allow, like, 5,000 square feet is allowed to have a rezoning for PD?
This is Ryan Manassi, planning, design and development coordination. Let me point out a couple of different things, to answer Ruth's question, no, you have to have 7,500 square feet and 75 feet of width for the Seminole Heights SHCI zoning district. I just want to put on the record as well, there, there's two, obviously, we both know there's Euclidian and PD. With the Euclidian, staff is confident that the Seminole Heights Code that's already established is applicable to this development. Obviously, it's the applicant's request to either go Euclidian or PD, but just so council is aware, there are no waivers with Euclidian, but with a PD, there are waivers that could be brought forward to you. So in, in some cases, it could be less restrictive in certain areas. But hopefully, that answers Ruth's question, as well as just a little bit of extra on the PD, as well as Euclidian rezonings.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to Ryan real quick?
Councilman Ding Felder.
Okay. Somebody pointed this out to me recently, Ryan, and, you know, I've been out of this for, for eight years, so I'm just trying to dust off and get back up to speed. But somebody pointed out to me that in the Euclidian situation, there's no waivers. However, after the Euclidian got, if the Euclidian got granted tonight, a, an applicant can come back and ask staff for some waivers. In an administrative waiver possibility. And maybe, maybe I just need, I think I'd rather hear from legal Kate or, or somebody else, Susan. If I'm right, things change, I don't know. But, you know, because that would concern me too, because they could get their Euclidian zoning today, and then they could come back and say, we're not asking for any waivers. And then could they legally come back in and ask for administrative waivers?
This is Kate Wells, for the record, with respect to the Seminole Heights Special Overlay District, there is the opportunity for property owners to seek design exceptions, DE1s, that that are considered administratively and they would, you know, I, Ryan's probably in a better position to identify the types of items that can be varied in that manner administratively. And then there's always the opportunity, I don't know if the VRB would still apply within the Seminole Heights Special Overlay. So that, that is accurate, that with regard to Euclidian rezonings, while at the type, time of the rezoning, they're not seeking any waivers because of the nature of the rezoning, there are other administrative processes built into the code that would otherwise be available to that property owner once they got the rezoning.
All right. Any other questions from council members? Hearing none, seeing none. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item?
Yeah, I'll speak on it. Sir, my name is Mark Duberry. I'm one of the residents that lives the closest to Elizabeth Construction and across the street from the lot. I'm just catty cornered to it. I would say that, you know, as far as my, you know, the neighborhoods at least closest to us and closest to Elizabeth, we all have had a great relationship with Elizabeth Construction. The owners have been very accepting of our complaints with, I know some of the other residents in the neighborhood have complained about the, the street blocking and of their clients. And I can tell you, since I've lived here in the past year, they have made a lot of effort to educate their clients and the situation has improved significantly in them trying to work with the neighborhood to resolve some of these resolution. Talking with Elizabeth and Jesus, the owners, they are, have maintained that they want to do a parking lot there. In that case, you know, I've taken the time to read through a lot of the complaints that were in the agenda, as well as on social media. And the big complaint is, you know, the, their clients that drive through the neighborhood. And I do think that this parking lot, if it's paved, would definitely help to alleviate some of the traffic of the larger trucks going back, because it does provide a pretty good turnaround area for trucks. And I've, I've seen it happen from some of the clients too. It's, it's very impressive how they can do it. So I really think that that would solve a lot of those complaints. I think where a lot of the complaints come from too is that information is being put out that it's going to be an expanded cutting operation. From the owners, of course, they've maintained that the cutting operations are going to stay the same, that this is only going to be an additional parking and turnaround for the showroom that's on the north side of Hillsborough, sorry, the, yeah, the north side of Hillsborough Avenue. And that this lot on the south side of Hollywood, sorry, would be expanded cutting, which from Ruth and the owners has been, south side of Hollywood, it's a parking lot. North side of Hollywood is going to be a showroom, which, you know, the residents that live closest, myself included, are pretty excited about. The only concern from our standpoint, living closest to them, the noise is not an issue, because the cutting is, is done, you know, in a building. It's really not loud. We can never even hear it inside our house. And we're only one property lot away from where the cutting happens. The only, I think, issue would be a, probably a code issue, whereas not contributing to the flooding on Florida Avenue, because there is already a lot of standing water where Hollywood meets Florida. And if you were to pave this area, say, with a non-pervious surface, where that would go? But I know that's probably a coding issue, not necessarily, necessarily a rezoning issue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I had a question for Mr. Duberry before he checks out.
Councilman Ding Futter.
Mr. Duberry, you're obviously a good guy, a nice guy and a trusting guy. Many of us have been at this a long time and here's, here's my question to you. Is you, you have an investment there? You, you own that house on the street, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. You're obviously care greatly about the street and, and you feel comfortable with this particular family or bit small business, correct?
Correct.
In our world of capitalism, they could sell that business next year, right? And none of us know who they might sell it to. There, we also don't know what that new property owner might do in terms of, once they get that rezoning, commercial intensive, directly category cornered to you, there's no guarantee that it's just going to be a parking lot. They could put, they could start storing all those granite pieces out there and using their forklifts to, to go up and down and pick them up and move them around. I don't know what, you know, I don't know what the issues are in that business. But obviously, there are some issues in that business, because we received a lot of letters about it. But you're the closest one. But are my concern, and I think other council members always have this concern, of zoning is forever, okay? And how do we protect you and your neighbors in the best possible way from some future issue? And as I told Ms. Ruth, and I hope her clients are listening, I believe them, but that's irrelevant. Because under our zoning system and under our legal system, anything can change tomorrow. They could get the rezoning, they could sell it, they could, and there's a whole list of five pages. I don't know if you saw it. There's a list of five pages of potential other uses that could go in the Seminole Heights CI, including a gas station. Okay, so they can level those four or five blocks. And if they could fit a gas station there, they could put it there. I don't know if it could fit. But I'm just saying, that's the list of uses that are there. Vehicle sales, okay? We all have, I think we all agree, there's plenty of vehicle sales on Florida Avenue. But guess what? Under the CI category, they, they could, you know, go back to vehicle sales and vehicle repair, minor and major. I don't think that's what you want, a catty corner across the street from you. And, and again, you're a nice guy and you're a nice neighbor, but those are the issues we have to be concerned about.
Absolutely. And that is, that's something that I'm concerned about too. I don't want a gas station there. I don't want a restaurant there. I don't want a brewery there. Luckily, with a business that's like Elizabeth Construction, is that it only happens during the day. There's no night bleed over. There's no, you know, parking from lack of, you know, at some of the breweries where people have to put signs out in their yard saying, don't park in front of our house. Or the big eighteen-wheeler cars that block off residential roads for, you know, significant periods of time. I absolutely understand what you're saying. I agree with you. I do want it to be a parking lot. And if there's a way to guarantee that, then obviously, I'm on board with it, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker. Do we have any other speakers for public comment? Okay, go ahead, please state your name.
This is Ilingo Sadio from Planning Development. We have four people here from the public speaking this item.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Leyva. I'm Jesus Gonzalez, owner of the property, wife. Jesus Gonzalez is owner of seventy-nine zero zero North Florida Avenue, seventy-eight zero eight North Florida Avenue, and one oh four Hollywood Street. We have been working on the same operations since two thousand and three, where my husband was a coworker in the Marmol Business Theater. He purchased the business in two thousand and eight. And we have been trying to improve the area where our business being seen. We contacted professionals, engineers, architects, and we went to, a few months ago, to the Tampa City Office to request for the resort. All to ask is we could join a transfer load one oh four Hollywood in a commercial area. Our objective was only making a parking of the area for customers who will come to visit our business at one oh four West Hollywood Street. In the city, we speak with different representatives. Among of them, Mr. Beboran, Richard Nocchino, Diana Dorgan, and other ones. They explained to us that the area we need, who only be as a parking, we also need to comply the zoning department. From that moment, my husband began to do a legal procedure to do the application. After we submit the petition, Ms. Ruth, the architect, my husband and me, we decided to talk, walk down to Hollywood Street and see different neighborhoods and know their opinion about our project. And we asked them if they could sign them to support our project, as well to know who were those who oppose our request, which can be in fact with the changes in the whole industry. And to be able to have the opportunity to solve the concerns. A citizen of this country and professional, we understood their disagreement. Our objective in this petition is to increase our business and consequently, the area will increase in value Seminole High. But it's also to improve the traffic problem in that block. We, where if it's possible to put that parking area, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Remember, I'm, I'm keeping time. We have three minutes per speaker. And you, you use up your time.
If we use that area for the parking, the truck will have more space in front of our business to unload materials and we could avoid the traffic to work part of the whole industry.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just as a, as a point of order, she's, she sounds like she is the petitioner.
Yes, I was gonna say.
She probably gets additional time.
We're a public comment, but you can have thirty more seconds. Go ahead.
And those returned to Florida for the departure and not fully entered to the community area. Because before concluding this speech, I would like to express to you that we are an honest and hardworking family, where my husband, in spite of his difficulty with the language, has a manager's professional life and general contractor. He has, has allowed him to have a business, which have helped and increased the economy. We have also a beautiful, the economy in this beautiful country, while we thank him infinitely for having conceived us, allowing us to grow as a citizen. We, as Hispanic, also form a funny guy, and we are very proud of him to be a pilot on the army. But also, I'm a nurse, I'm a licensed nurse. I'm in the first line of the COVID-19 and taking care of people in particular time place on Seminole High. We don't understand, we're trying to explain, we try to talk to the only few openings that we have. They don't want to listen to us. We don't know why. So, we are Hispanic, we are from another country, but are very grateful to the United States. And I would like to finish to say to all listeners, Hispanic people, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Speakers have three minutes. I have a timer here, three minutes. I will stop you at the three-minute mark. Next speaker, please. Please state your name.
Hello, my name is Wendy Hayes. I'm representing the property adjacent to this special from owner Ursar. I've grown up in this neighborhood since nineteen sixty-three. And I believe that this project, if you can assure the neighbors that if you could put up a sign that says, please don't have the trucks come back into the neighborhood, or if you can have it be where they would allow parking only for this particular lot, I think that would appease the different neighbors in the neighborhood and would be an asset to the community. And this is a an improvement to the neighborhood and not a detriment to the neighborhood. And I've lived in the neighborhood since nineteen sixty-three. And we own the property directly adjacent to this property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please, please state your name.
How are you doing? I'm Roy Hunt. And I am an investor, and I buy and sell houses in that community all around Seminole Heights area. I've, I've purchased many properties there. What I wanted to talk about is I had bought granite from the yard even before when Jesus worked for them. And just seeing what they have done over the past, you know, what is it, eight years or nine years? What they've done with that whole property there, as far as, you know, like, like the person that was on earlier talked about how they've moved fences, they've tried to expand parking, because it was difficult. I mean, that whole area there is right against Florida Avenue. It's kind of a zero lot line to where there's not a whole lot of parking. Some of the, some of the residents around there would get frustrated with people parking up and down the street. So, they have done a lot of, a lot of changes, as well as plans for their building, their building. I gotta tell you, it's, it's like a South Howard type of building that they're about to put up there. It's going to be beautiful. So it's all brick front and, you know, they're, they're making parking next to that. So literally, the parking lot across the street is just going to be like an overspill and a place for trucks to turn around. And with looking at everything they're doing, I'm really impressed with what they're doing. So, you know, hopefully, you guys, you know, grant them the space, because they are a great, a great company to deal with in Florida. I think they're one of the best granite yards in Tampa. In fact, I've used them for many years. So, anyway, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker, please.
Hi, guys. My name is Ava Gonzalez. I should contract Elizabeth Construction. I live around there. And I got eight employees. And sometime I'd be there with customers and I need parking. So I hopefully you can help them to, to grow up. Because if I grew up, my family grew up, Elizabeth Construction can't make any people growing on this beautiful country. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Did I hear that there was no one else? Are there any other speakers?
There is no one else. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Petitioner, if you have anything to wrap up with? Petitioner, if you have a rebuttal?
Yeah. Can you listen now?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yeah. I was looking, I want to share my screen if that is possible.
Go ahead.
Okay, I was looking all the, the letters from the, from the opposition. And I was looking on the property appraiser, one by one. And I found that some of the letters come from the same area close to them. For example, this people, that is Margaret. Margaret is, like, if you go from this side to there, that is one point seven miles driving, maybe in those two points line got to be more than one, one mile. Okay, that's one, one letter from the opposition that was from Margaret. The other letter, that, that was, these people in here, that is, oh, Michelle, that is also, I think that she's also too far from the area. Yeah, that, these, these people in here are six thousand feet away from the site. And I was to the other letter, and I found this one. This one is a little closer, because I understand this one, because maybe it's on the same area. But if you see this is a dead, dead road, the, any vehicle can go here and go to the, to the river, to his work. They cannot go straight to the river, you know? And that's on the area, but I don't understand. Okay, if I go one by one, keep going, keep going, looking where the people live, looking all the concerning about that, every people is concerning about the, all the issues about parking. parking. I found this other one, people in here. And he's also, this person here, Richard, Richard is eleven thousand feet, eleven thousand feet away from the site. I don't understand. This person, Maggie, is the same situation. They are like two miles. If I go to the line in here, two point seven could be two miles away. If I go looking and researching all the, all these letters from the opposition, I know that a lot of people are away, only two, I found just two letters that was really close from the property. You see the map that I have, all the people that has supporting, the letters that are supporting this one? I found more people that are supporting from the last time. This is another person that is away from the, this is from the opposition. And this one in here, Bargnus, he is also too far from the, from the, and these people have two properties. The Bargnus I found, two properties. One that is close, but not too close, and the other one that is too far also. I think that this one is one of the properties from them, that's six miles away. And this one also is too far. All these letters, all these letters, I was looking something on the property appraiser, because I say, why the people don't say the, what is the address, what is the, the old property address, you know? And there was a many letters that they don't show the property address. This is a, this is a supporting letters that I submit. You know, but the, all, all these people is around the property. That's no one mile away, that's no two miles away from the site. I wonder you have in consideration this situation about the opposition letters? Because that's, I really, that's not make sense to me. I don't know if that's makes sense to you. This is the letter from the contractor that was talking there. This is another people that, this people is, this person is opposition, but he's across, this is, this are out there two fifty feet, but is close, doesn't mean that, okay. But, yeah, this is that, that person there, that's on the, in the area, that's opposition. But all, the all other people that is really, that's not, that person that is like less than one mile. But all these other letters, all these other letters from the opposition, also they have some letters that are double, you know, on, that's double on the file. I think the number eight, six, number ten and eleven, I think so, that are double, are the same letter.
Thank you very much, ma'am. You've reached your time limit for rebuttal.
Okay, let me show you the map. Give me one minute, one minute.
I gave you an extra, I gave you an extra minute already. We're at six minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Councilman Gudes.
I've got to leave the meeting for about ten minutes. There is a youth fire academy graduating today, and they've asked me to say a few words to the cadets that are graduating. So, I'll be back in about ten minutes, but I need to go say congratulations to those young cadets, sir.
All right. Councilmember Gudes will be back in a few minutes.
Point of order before Councilman Gudes leaves?
Councilman Dingfelder.
Is this something you'd like to be voting on, Councilman Gudes?
I, I, I wasn't clear when you asked her in regards to a PD. I wasn't too clear on that. If she can just explain to me about that again, because I wasn't too clear on why they didn't go for a PD.
All right, the petitioner, please answer that question.
It's a petition.
Petitioner, if you could answer that question from Councilman Gudes.
Yes, I can answer about the land development, the plan development, the PD requirements. You know that the PD is a custom zoning. When you request a PD, they need to be specific. I don't see my camera here. Do you see my camera? The people see my camera? I disappear? Okay, anyway, share my camera. Okay, maybe I'm there now. Okay, good. Okay, you know that, that when, when I request a PD, the PD is a custom zoning, specific uses. They take out all the other uses, okay? That is good. For fifty-three feet only that we are requesting the zoning, because all the other lot, all the other properties already have, already are the zoning, district, Seminole High Commercial Intensive. The current business are located on that zoning. Okay? They cross the street on Hollywood, on the north side of Hollywood. That particular piece of land is already sewn, Seminole High Commercial Intensive. Already they have building that was approved. They start with the construction. They submit a permit for the, the land, the property that is across the street on the north side of the Hollywood. And they go to the building and it's approved, because all these people go to review the site plan, not for PDs, you know, for standard zoning that is already on the district. Okay, what is the reason that I got to say to my customer, okay, lose all the rights that you have on that properties that you already are owner with a standard zoning? And I got to request advice to, to them, lose that right that you have for the other lots? I don't know if you understand that situation. I don't know if you was the owner for that properties and you have already sewn, standard zoning, Seminole High Commercial Intensive. I don't know if you want to lose all that to have a PD? Because they need, they, if you deny the petition, okay, what happen if they, if all of you have an agree and deny the petition? I don't think so that we got to go to the PD, honestly. Because they got to lose, they got to lose all the other uses that are allowed.
Okay, ma'am, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other council members with any questions at this time?
I guess just procedurally, I'm just wondering if Councilman Gudes wants to be here for the vote.
I'm gonna stay for the vote.
Okay.
I'm gonna stay for the vote.
All right. Any other members, questions from council members? All right, hearing none. May I have a motion to close?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Dingfelder. Do we have a second?
Second.
If there's no, no objection to the closing, I'd like to go ahead and close the hearing. All right, Councilmember Vieira, would you like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. Forgive me. I don't know if Ms. Wells has an opinion. Do you have any feeling one way or the other about closing and opening the hearing by unanimous consent without objection? Or do you, what would you prefer, a roll call for the purposes of the record?
Mr. Shelby, I believe that was addressed on August sixth, that it was gonna be done without a roll call vote.
Okay, that'll be fine. Mr. Chairman, if you could, when you announce it, if you could announce after the decision, if you could just say a motion by council on unanimous consent to close the public hearing.
All right, sounds good. So, we have a motion to close by unanimous consent on, by council members. Councilman Vieira, if you'd like to take this substitute ordinance for item number eleven.
And Mr. Chair, Councilman Dingfelder had his hand up. I don't know.
Oh, Councilman Dingfelder, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unless Mr. Vieira cares, I'd like to make an alternative motion to deny. I don't wanna jump in and, you know, you recognize Mr. Vieira, but, you know.
You had your hand up first?
I think so.
Was there a second? I have no preference.
Well, I haven't, I haven't made the motion yet, so I'm gonna make the motion and then see, see if I get a second.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I missed it. Councilman Vieira, did you make the motion? And Councilman, I see.
Okay. And it's up to the chair. I mean, I, I'm willing to read it, but it's up to the chairman.
Go ahead, Councilman Dingfelder.
Okay. I'm gonna move to deny rezoning twenty dash twenty-four, I believe that's the number, for the property located at 104 Hollywood Street. Due to the failure of the applicant to meet its burden of proof to provide competent substantial evidence in the record that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan in the city code. If this, if this rezoning came in as, in as a PD, and they specifically showed, this is where the parking lot's gonna be, this is where the building's gonna be, this is where the storage is gonna be, and they could come in, they own the property next door, so they can meet the seventy-five hundred square foot requirement. Okay, they have the ability to do that. They have chosen not to do that. They chose not to do it, because she said they want the greatest latitude for other uses. But that's exactly my point. They can't have it both ways, okay? They, they, I, you know, I think if it was, came in as a PD, the neighborhood, the community, whether or not you live a block away or five blocks away, the community could be assured what's gonna be there next year, five years, and maybe in our lifetime. But, but with the Euclidean, it can't happen. There's no guarantees of anything that the nice, Ms. Landano had said, that the petitioner said, no guarantees whatsoever. So, with that, and then I, I, I'm not gonna read into the record, but I'm gonna make reference, there were several neighbors who lived nearby, including the Kirshners, Richard and Susan Kirchner, and they're at 119 West Hollywood, which sounds like, I think, the same block. There was another one on Hollywood, I think, I saw, and then there was one around the corner, which Ms. Landano made reference to, which is probably only about a block away. And then there were another fourteen letters that we received. And the general nature of all these letters, and Ms. Kirchner probably was in more detail, was that, that based upon her experience, and she's lived there since ninety-six, that she, she believes, well, I'm gonna read it out of her letter, "The granite business uses West Hollywood to load and unload tractors, trucks and trailers. This makes it difficult and dangerous for all of us to use the street and often impossible to enter West Hollywood. That's only gonna get worse as this business, wonderful small business, as it expands, this, this issue's only gonna get worse." She said, "Expanding the granite business will increase the traffic problem." A particular concern is that, let's see, blah, blah, blah. She, one of the other neighbors, and they, it looks like they use sort of a form letter, but they all expressed concern about to preserve the integrity of the area. They, they believe it's a residential area and that this is intruding on the residential nature of the area. "The heavy industrial nature of this business is not compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood, and expanding its footprint would be detrimental." And that was repeated over and over by, by many of the, the folks who wrote to us. But Mr. Shelby often tells us, this is not a popularity contest. We don't count letters, and, you know, the petitioner brought some of their customers, and that's fine and good, and we don't know where they live, but that doesn't matter either. Everybody in the community gets to give, give their input, but at the end of the day, it's up to us to make a wise decision that's going to protect that community forever, because we can go, we will come and go, but that rezoning will stay on there forever. So, I'm gonna move based upon that. I don't believe that they've met the goals, objectives and policies in the comprehensive plan, specifically as related to neighborhood protection. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to deny, and I'm gonna respectfully suggest that they come back in with a PD, so everybody can be protected, and they can have a thriving business, and that's a win-win for everyone.
Councilman Miranda.
I'm looking for a second.
Second, you're muted. Councilman Miranda's muted.
I'd like to ask the city attorney, Kate Wells, a question, because of the rules of procedure, I'm not going to the rules of procedure, but one council member you asked to take the motion before, and I'm not for or against anything Mr. Dingfelder said, I'm just wanna clear record in case this goes somewhere else, that we have a very clear record. I wanna ask the city attorney if that is a protocol or not. That council member never had a, made a motion to approve or deny.
Councilman Miranda, I'll have to defer that question to Mr. Shelby as your city council attorney, since you're asking about a rule of procedure.
Thank you very much.
And the short answer, sir, is that's why I wanted to know whether there was a motion on the floor and whether a second was. The indication was that Councilman Vieira did not make the motion as of yet, and there was no second. Therefore, it went back to the chairman, and as council knows, the chairman does decide the rules of order unless overruled, and that was his decision.
Again, I'm, I'm not opposed to what you say, but only, only the one that was, that knows what he was gonna do was Councilman Vieira, and there was a microsecond between one and the other one getting in, but I, and I have no, no, no dog in this fight. I'm just saying what I see. Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney, I mean, Mr. Council Attorney.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, if I may ask the maker of a motion a question. Sir, based on what you said, Councilman Dingfelder, do you then make, based on the testimony and evidence that you cited in your motion, you then make a finding of fact that city council then, on the basis of your motion, finds it appropriate to maintain the present Euclidean zoning rather than accept the applicant's request for the change? You understand my question, sir?
No.
I'm asking, I'm asking, sir, whether based on the competent substantial evidence that you determine and have cited, that it's your determination that the Euclidean zoning as a, as a finding of fact based on what you found, that it should remain as it is rather than it be changed as the applicant requests?
Oh, yes. Yes, I thought I said that, but I probably stopped short of saying that, and I appreciate the clarification, absolutely. And I, and, and one other thing, I'm just wondering if the, if, since the applicant has a, an open zoning petition, if she would prefer a continuance as opposed to a vote, and they could go back into some other process, perhaps a PD. So, Mr. Chairman, if you wanna give her that option, so she doesn't have to necessarily renotice and everything else, and maybe they can just roll this petition into something else that, that might. Now, I have no idea how the vote's gonna go. I don't think anybody knows how the vote's gonna go, Ms. Landano, but I think that often we give petitioners that choice.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Councilman Vieira.
I mean, I would think before we go there, that, I mean, we've only, we've had a, a motion, we've had a second, I, I would like to go through council, if, if, if proper, to give the applicant an informed decision, if, if people were willing to say, if it's proper for people to say how they're gonna, how they're looking at it, I guess, if you will, before going to a revision.
If I may, this is Kate Wells. I would recommend that city council, the individual members not disclose how they're gonna vote, either vote or you don't. It would be similar to polling. It would seem based on the city council comments, that the applicant should have an idea of how the motion may go, and, and she could certainly ask for a continuance, but I would recommend against any premature representation of how you're gonna vote, or just go ahead and vote.
Thank you for your words, Councilman Wells. I withdraw.
Thank you very much. Councilman Miranda.
I agree with Mr. Dingfelder's last statement regarding the ability of the, bringing the petitioner back up and asking if they wanna ask for a change. Is that, is that right, Mr. Dingfelder?
Yes, Mr. Miranda, I was always suggesting out of courtesy that she had the option to ask for a continuance, to do whatever she might wanna do.
I, I would suggest that that would require you to reopen the public hearing as concluded this time.
All right, can we get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
I'll move.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Gudes. All right, roll call vote.
On which?
On reopening the public hearing.
Well, I think you can do that ministerially, right?
All right, unanimous consent. Is there any objection to reopening the public hearing? All right, hearing none. Hearing none, the public hearing is now open. The petitioner, having heard what has been discussed, if you'd like to speak or address counsel, respond to anything regarding having a, requesting a continuance, and changing this application, modifying it.
Yes, Ms. Landano. I understand the position of the, I understand the position to go to land development, but one of the questions on the application is that if we think that is in Houston, this is a good, I'm sorry about my English, the pronunciations, but if that is in Houston, is that is something that is for the benefit of the neighborhood and benefit for the owners. I think that I got to speak with the owners, but I don't think so that enforce to them that go to a land development and lose all the uses that are allowed on the current zoning, that they have the other properties, that already have the zoning, got to be a good advice from me. I know that that's got to be the decision from the owners. I cannot make the decision now, but if that was my, I think that that's not a good position that enforce the owners to go to a PD and lose only for a piece of land that is only fifty-three feet, and the other land already have the zoning, the current zoning, seminal height, commercial intensive is current. And they got to lose all the current zoning with all the current things. I don't think that is a good advice. I'm sorry, I really say sorry about the opinion for the advice to go to land development, but I think that I need to speak with the owners, but I don't think that is got to be a good decision for them. And that's gonna not to be, no, that's not good to be, holding the position it was your lots. If you have four lots.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
No.
Why don't you let her take a recess? She can call, she can take a recess, she can call her owners, we can circle back to it.
Okay, we're gonna leave this item open and move on to item number twelve to give the petitioner.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
I have a question. To have the decision for the continuance to PD or the continuance, I need to say today, or I can say on two days, three days?
It has to be decided tonight, if you're gonna move to continue or if you want to vote. We'll give you an opportunity to speak to the owners, your clients, and then we can go to the next item and take this item back up.
Mr. Chair.
Let me call them because they are there, they are on the convention center.
Okay, Mr. Shelby.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Carlson wishes to be.
Mr. Carlson.
Mr. Chair, typically in a, in a in-person meeting, the petitioner has the benefit of being able to hear some input from city legal department. Is it possible we could just have legal quickly state what would happen, how the application process would be different if they postponed versus if they were turned down?
Would legal like to opine on that?
Thank you, Councilman Carlson. If the, if the application before you is denied this evening, there will be a period of time where your client would be precluded from filing the same application for the same piece of property. I believe it's a year, but if the application is different for a different type of zoning, and it addresses the basis for denial, I believe that that one-year period would not apply. And if I misstated that, perhaps Ryan Manassi could confirm the record if I did misstate those timelines.
Ryan Manassi, planning and design, that is correct.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
I was just gonna say, I believe the applicant is at the convention center too, if that saves any time.
Mr. Vera.
Thank you, and to the applicant, I'm gonna say, well, did you understand everything she said? I'm gonna repeat this in Spanish. Do you entiendo todo que esa mujer estaba diciendo?
Sí, señor.
Yes.
Yo quiero saber si usted.
Wait, no, in Spanish, we don't have an interpreter, so.
Yeah, it has to be in English.
Please.
Yeah. What I want.
Just to clarify.
She's speaking, sir, she was answering Mr. Vera, I'm sorry. Go ahead, petitioner.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I want to, if you understand that go to a land development, a PD, is a custom zoning, and they got to lose the other zoning, the other standard zoning uses, only for fifty-three feet, only to have a better parking lots. The impetus are ready there with the current zoning. They don't got to change the other zoning, the building is there, the business is there, they have. You know, it's, I understand everything, but.
Where, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mr. Vera.
I'm trying to speak here with Ms. Landano, the applicant's representative. I see Councilman Dingfelder with a point of order. I have point of order concerns about what's happening here, where I feel that, you know, the, I just have concerns, let's just put it that way. I have major concerns, I don't wanna sully the record, I just have concerns, but go ahead.
And if I can, if I can follow up, Councilman Vera, I should say that the process adds a level of complexity to the record that stands to become problematic if it should go off the rails down the road as a result of this decision. It is, it is a special consideration that's been given to a particular applicant, and frankly, that sort of thing, you've heard her response. She actually can make the decision, and she hasn't indicated whether she would take council's request, or her request, it would have to be her request, to have this postponed for a few minutes or continue till the next hearing is done, and I haven't heard her make that request. So that being said, I think Councilman Vera's point is well-taken with regard to keeping the record as uncomplicated and as straightforward as possible.
And if I, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Those are, thank you, that's her decision, and to put it, just to tap on the subject here, it's her decision, I don't want it to be unduly influenced on the record. I just don't, again, there's intervening issues here with the applicant's representative, and I don't want it to be unduly influenced. That's all I'm gonna say. I'll leave that up to the chair.
Thank you very much.
Can I clarify?
Councilman Dingfelder.
Just that we're having a clean record, Mr. Vera. My point of order was, in my opinion, she was starting to argue her case again, you know, and talk about the substance of what we've asked her. I think the key issue is that she wanna take a few minutes to go back and call her clients, not for us to, her to relitigate them. That was my point of order, and I apologize for interrupting.
All right, thank you very much. For the applicant, if you'd like to take some time, a few minutes, to speak with your client, we'll move to the next item, and then we'll come back to you. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I got, give me a couple minutes, let me call them. Because I have them on the convention center, let me told with them, and I come back on maybe, I don't know, twenty minutes, thirty minutes.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item, and then we'll go back to you.
If I can.
Mr. Shelby.
Ms. Landano, I just want to logistically clear this with Jim Crew and Suiling Lucas. How best for Ms. Landano to be able to do that? Should she log out and log back in, or should she mute a microphone and her camera?
Jim Crew, City Clerk's office, we do have twenty-four analysts at the moment. We can only add one more. It would be best for her to log off and sign back into the meeting after discussing with her clients.
Okay.
Landano, you understand that, then?
Yes, I am.
Log out, and then once you're ready, log back in, and then we'll come back to your item after we take on number twelve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move on to item number twelve.
Mr. Chairman, again, that requires the applicant and all the registered participants be on the screen at one time, so that the clerk can swear them in, please.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that you tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just for the record, is that everyone, Mr. Crew, and is there nobody at the convention center, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, there is no one at the convention center. They can confirm if otherwise.
I don't hear them responding. So that being said, I'm going to announce, again, with this case, have there been written comments, or have you answered, I'm sorry? Are there public comments in the convention center? I see you there.
This is my English, sorry for the language. There is no one here to decide on the case.
Thank you. That being said, Mr. Chairman, I'm inquiring of the clerk, have written comments been received on this case?
Well, the clerk often has not received any written comments for this item.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, all right. Go ahead with number twelve, if you'd like to begin.
Thank you, Mary Samiego, if you could please bring up my screen for my PowerPoint. Is it visible?
Yes, it's loading.
Thank you, Mary Samiego from Planning, Design and Development Coordination. The case before you is AB two twenty-ten. It's a AB sales special use request for the property located at forty-three fifteen North Florida Avenue. They're currently requesting small venue with beer, wine and liquor on-premise consumption and off, packaged sales off-premise consumption. Again, they are asking for a small venue. They are proposing a total of three thousand five hundred and seventy square feet of total AB sales area. Of that inside sales area would be two thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet, and outside sales area would be seven hundred and twenty. They require parking spaces, are twenty-seven required, and they're providing thirty-two spaces. And their hours for alcohol sales would be consistent with chapter twenty-four. I'm sorry, chapter fourteen. There is currently no AB sales on the property. It was historically used as an office or retail use. According to the floor plan, there would be a maximum of a hundred and nine occupants. Again, based on the number of occupants and the proposed use, twelve, twenty-seven parking spaces are required. There's one waiver being requested to the eastern property line use buffer for a portion of the site from eight feet down to five, and there are no AB sales areas per view within two hundred and fifty feet. Here is the subject site plan, showing reuse of the existing building for the AB sales area. Where my cursor is located would be the outside sales area. Again, there's the council's information that's seven hundred and twenty square feet. And then here is the parking lot with ingress and egress off of Florida Avenue, as well as off of Chelsea Street. This small area here is the request for the waiver from eight feet down to five feet, and then the remaining portion of the parking lot meets current buffering standards. Here's another view of the site plan, including the parking, I'm sorry, the landscaping code and tree protection. They're compliant with all natural resources standards. Here is the floor plan of the micro brewery and the tasting room with the outdoor seating area. All these exhibits are part of your site plan packet, city council, and then here is their proposed landscaping plan. Here is the subject property for current zoning. It's currently zoned, Seminole Heights Commercial Intensive, with Seminole Heights Residential to the east within the established neighborhood, and then Seminole Heights Commercial Intensive on the other side, being the western side of North Florida Avenue. Here is the subject properties photographs. Again, it's currently a vacant building. They're doing an adaptive reuse of that building with the expansion of just some outdoor seating in this area along Florida Avenue. Here is a neighbor to the south, their vehicle sales use, as well as to the north. I believe that's a vehicle sales use as well. Eastern neighbor is a single-family residence, and then the western neighbor across Florida Avenue is another vehicle sales slash vehicle repair use. Here is the site plan for your reference. There are some minor changes between first and second reading that the applicant would have to complete with transportation, some notes added. Natural Resources does have some modifications. Natural Resources did find this inconsistent because of that small waiver that they're asking, instead of eight feet in this area, they're asking to go down to five. Solidways and urban design, both did find it consistent, but they did have some changes between first and second reading. So overall, the development and compliance staff did find it inconsistent because of that buffer reduction for the drive aisle in this northeasterly location. Natural Resources staff, as well as transportation staff, are available for questions. They are on the air if you have any, and that concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions from any council members? All right, thank you very much. Next up.
I guess we'd need help from, yeah. So, sorry, my name's Anthony Derby. Good evening, council members. I'm representing the owner, Free Course Inc., of the building. Here for any questions. Currently, we operate a brewery two blocks south of this location, Brew Bus Brewing. Due to rising rents, we decided to move and downsize our business, but still keep it within the area. So we've located this property to be able to move to at the end of this year, early, beginning early next year. So already wanna take an established business within Seminole Heights and just move it two blocks up the road.
Okay, are there any questions from council members? Any questions from council members?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Councilman Citro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Petitioner, is, are you gonna have any amplified music on the outside?
No, we don't plan to. Really just outdoor seating patio area, just for people to enjoy outdoors, especially right now, obviously with COVID going on, the better.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Citro, may I follow up, Mr. Chairman, with Mr. Citro's question?
Thank you.
Councilmen and members of council, as you know, the representations that are made at this hearing are not binding. These are site plan controlled. I don't have the site plan open in front of me. The question would be ultimately, is it council's pleasure or is it council's desire to inquire of the petitioner if the council, based on whatever evidence that it weighs, finds that outdoor amplified sound to be an adverse impact? Does that need to be addressed? And if so, how could it be addressed in a legally binding fashion? That would be the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Shelby. Petitioner, then, will you state that you will not be having amplified music, and that will be placed on the site plans?
Whatever is consistent with zoning, whatever would be allowed with the zoning is what we'd be willing to put into place.
So then you are saying that you will, outside, you will not have any amplified music, and that will be put on the site plan?
If that, yeah, if that is required, I guess, of the zoning process, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Samiego asked to be recognized.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Samiego.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just clarification for the applicant, you're allowed to have amplified music now, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think Ms. Citro is requesting, would you agree to not have amplified music, which is an additional requirement that you put on the site plan?
Thank you for that. Well, if we're allowed to have it now, obviously, we wanna be good neighbors. Currently at our brewery right now, we do have a little outdoor seating with some, I guess you would call it amplified music, but one or two speakers out there kinda playing low music, and that's our intention. So as long as that is allowed within the zoning, then that's. But no, we will not be hiring bands or anything like that to play on the patio to be a nuisance or not be a good neighbor.
All right, Councilman Citro, that answers your question, sir?
Not necessarily, but I'll go with it right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions from any other council members at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Ding Felder.
Thank you. Well, hand in hand with Mr. Citro's question, of course, is, is our regular question about hours of operation. Mr. Derby, do you have a business plan or I guess you're already, you already have certain hours of operation at your other facility? And I ask, I ask what they are.
Yeah, currently we're open until 1:00 a.m. and really just kind of to include any New Year's Eve sort of celebration type of activities. So currently, open until 1:00 a.m.
Seven days a week?
No, only on Friday and Saturday right now, but obviously we would like to not have a restriction on the day just in case New Year's Eve falls on on Monday or Tuesday or something on those lines.
Would you be okay with including that same limitation on your site plan as a, as a means of, you know, protecting the neighborhood, protecting the community? Otherwise, it's going to be, if we don't have any constraints, I believe the city code speaks to 3:00 a.m. But it sounds like you don't need 3:00, 3:00 a.m.
I don't need it. Um, you know, if that's what the council members wish, I'm not opposed to that if that's what it is. You know, we have had zero complaints at our property currently and we don't plan to have any more down the road.
Okay. Uh, thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other councilman? Councilman Miranda. Councilman Miranda, you're muted, sir.
I, I'm not an attorney, don't plan to be one, but the gentleman said that the council wishes, not the council wishes. He stated that he had the hours at the same location and he talked about Friday and Saturday for 1:00 a.m. But when he, when it was asked, he put it back, it's the council wishes. It's not my wish, the council's wish, it's his wishes.
And Ms. Miranda, if I could follow, if I, if I could follow up with you, I believe the record would make that very clear if a judge were to look at that, sir. You understand that if there are findings of adverse impacts, then certainly council can ask you to address them, but ultimately it's your decision. It's not council's. Although, although that might, that might factor ultimately in what their ultimate findings are, but that's neither here nor there. That's, that's, you know, you are the applicant. It's your request to city council.
And I guess we would like to stay within the chapter 14 guidelines of what it would allow would be 3:00 a.m.
And, and you do, I'm sorry.
Ms. Johnson, who was?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To clarify too, on the amplified sound, I know that there have been some comments about the outdoor amplified sound and I'm not sure that, that your response was, was clear enough. I wanted to get some clarity on that as well.
On our, on our process. Amplified music. Currently, what we have at our brewery, like I said, is two tables outside with almost background music. We don't plan to have any amplified music past normal background music, things like that.
But that I would think addresses Ms. Johnson-Belez, I think what your question is. The question is ultimately whether he would be willing to put it on the site plan, and I don't want to speak for him, so I prefer, I know what I thought he said, but it's better for him to say it.
We, we would be.
What is your desire, sir?
Yeah, we'd be willing to put that on a site plan for no af, no, no amplified music after a certain time period or anything like that. We want to make sure that, that we're, we're good stewards of the community. If that's their wish.
And Councilman Ding Felder is asking to be recognized.
Councilman Ding Felder.
Shelby, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Derby, I, I think there was a little confusion in terms of hours of operations, so I don't want to beat a dead horse, but, but you mentioned, I, I think you mentioned you stay open later, perhaps on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. But so what, what I might suggest is you want the, the city hours, the city code hours, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Maybe you could be comfortable with Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, 1:00 a.m. Would that impose on, on your business?
No, it would not. Seven days a week at 1:00 a.m. is perfectly acceptable.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Except for New Year's Eve, which you'd rather have 3:00 a.m.
No, not really. Honestly, the brewery.
That's fine. That's fine. Seven days a week, 1:00 a.m. Sounds like that's what you're good with.
Anybody else?
Always that, I'm sorry.
I thought Ms. Sam Diego had her hand if I was the church.
Ms. Sam Diego, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to clarify for the app, I just want to clarify for the applicant that it would be seven days a week for the entire 365 days in the year. So all holidays, just a point of clarification so we understand what he's agreeing to.
Correct. I'm agreeing to that.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Ms. Johnson, who was?
Well, I just had that we, we saw the outdoor amplified sound. I know we talked about, I believe Councilman Citro was asking about or discussing no outdoor amplified sound, and I think the applicant was speaking to no amplified sound outdoors after a certain hour, so I, I don't want there to be a disconnect on that issue.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Councilman Citro.
I was, I was preferring no amplified outside music at all. And that's up to the petitioner to whether he wants to agree to that or not. Ms. Sam Diego has, has, has told me what is on the site plan, what he is allowed to do. So again, I'm just asking the applicant if he would prefer to have outside amplified music or not. I would prefer not. Again, that's the applicant's decision, not mine.
We would prefer to have outdoor amplified music to whatever time we are currently allowed to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, we're going to go to public comment now. Is there anybody here for public comment on this item? Item number 12.
This is I think from Planning and Development. There is no one here to speak on behalf of this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Miranda.
I just want to point a clarity, Mr. Chairman. The petitioner stated that he's willing to go according to what I recall the last closing at 1:00, 1:00 a.m. For alcohol. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
But then he says whatever is allowed on the amplified music, but then he can close the bar at 1:00 and he can amplify music to 3:00. Is that what I understand? Not that he's going to do it.
Applicant, Mr. Derby?
That would not be our intention. Currently at our specific property right now, we can't have amplified music after 10:00 p.m. So we turn that off even though we continue to stay open past 10:00 p.m. I'm not sure what that property is on for its site plan. But for the liquor serving consumption purpose, we are fine with seven days a week at 1:00 a.m. Pleasure.
Councilman Gudes.
Well, I, I would imagine if you're going to stop serving alcohol at 1:00 o'clock, the music will turn up at 1:00 o'clock. Is it, is the, what is it you're going to? We're closing at 1:00 o'clock and we're done.
I can attest to what our business operations is right now. We have to turn off our amplified music at a certain time, even though we can continue serving. So our music, I guess, potentially could stay open till 1:00 a.m. That would be what the, what is allowed in the current site.
Well, that's what I'm asking. If, if you're saying that 1:00 o'clock will be your cutoff in your site plan and saying 1:00 o'clock, no more alcohol. And Mr. Citro is talking about music, now I would imagine, assume that the, the place is closing, so there wouldn't be any music past 1:00 o'clock, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
All right. Are we clear on that? Applicant, are you clear on that? Anybody else have any questions? All right, and we have no public comment on this. Is there anything else before we make a motion to close? Can I get a motion to close a public hearing?
Aho.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Gudes. If there's no objection, we will close the hearing based on unanimous consent. All right, who would like to take this item? Item number 12 to read this ordinance for first reading? Any takers?
I'll take that.
Councilman Gudes, go ahead.
Item AB 2-20-10, what is represented for first reading consideration? The owners approve any special use permit, it's two alcohol beverage sales, small venue consumption on premises and package sales off premises consumption and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcohol contact beer, wine, and liquor on that certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at 4315 North Florida Avenue, Tampa, Florida. It's a particular described in section two, providing that all orders, orders, he can fight or reveal by an effective date.
Second. All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gudes, second from Councilman Viera.
If I can, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Shelby.
Question from Ms. Sam Diego, does this require any revisions between first and second reading? Any corrections on the site plan?
Um, yes, there are corrections on the site plan and the motion to approve should also state the revised hours of alcohol sales.
Okay, and has the, and if I can just ask to clarify, the hours of sales, is council clear on that? And with regard to the hours of outdoor amplified sound or any limitation on the site plan that has been resolved as a result of the hours of operation? There's no comment with regard?
Question on the motion?
Councilman Ding Felder.
Okay, Councilman Gudes, and I'm sorry, I might have spaced out for a second. Did you say seven days a week, 1:00 a.m. Closing?
No, I didn't. I just read the order. I did not include the issue for the revision for the site.
Was that your intent of your motion to include?
You talked about the revision would be 1:00 a.m., seven days a week, 1:00 a.m. Closing, and I was assuming the, would have some amplified sound at 1:00 a.m. as well.
Thank you.
Am I correct with that with the petition?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. We have a motion from Councilmember Gudes. We have a second from Councilmember Viera, I believe. Can we get a roll call vote?
Viera?
Yes.
Gudes?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
No.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carry with Citro voting no. Second reading and adoption will be held on September 10th at 5:01 p.m.
All right, thank you very much. We're not going to go back to item 11. Item number 11, do we have the petitioner still on the line? We should have the petitioner still, or, or logged back in. Is she logged back in? Mr. Crew?
Yes, yes.
All right, Ruth is there. All right, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, Ru Londono, can I share my screen?
If we could share her screen.
Okay, I, I explained, I explained to the owners, one means a land development, PD, a plan, a plan development. I explained to them and I explained that all that you see here in that dark color is already so seminal high commercial intensive. I explained to them, one means that convert this piece in here to a planned development. I understand that you want the answer today. I have some question for you. That is allowed to change the request of the application from seminal high commercial intensive and seminal high residential to PD. Right now, that is allowed to do? Change the request?
Is that a request?
This Kate Wells, this is the city attorney. You would have to, if that is your client's intent, you would have to request a continuance in order to allow the application to be amended. And that revised application would then have to go before our DRC review because they would then be looking at a very detailed site plan that is not currently part of the application. But yes, the application could be amended if that is your client's desire, but this hearing would have to be continued.
Okay, thank you so much, Ru Londono. Okay, um, I was, I explained to them what is the what, what they got to lose because they got to lose something that they already has. And, um, I think that we want that you vote and you, because it's only not, it's not only one decision, you, I think that everybody has to make the decision. We got to have the reach to listen, what is the opinion from the other people? And we got to finish today with this one. If the owners want to, I explained to them that they got to cost more if we go in one month to a PD. But we want to continue. We want to finish today. And I hope that one, all of you understand what means lose all the, the seminal high array is commercial intensive. I really appreciate all the passion, the passion that you have with me. But no, we want to finish today with this one. And really, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Ding Felder.
Clarification from legal or from Mr. Maness? She indicated she would, they would lose everything they have in CI. I've seen a lot of PDs that include multiple potential uses on the PD site plan. Ryan or Kate or Susan or Marty. I'm not saying what they would be. I'm not saying that's the way this PD would come down, but, but very often or occasionally, we see PDs that are not limited to one use. Like in other words, it doesn't have to be limited to a marble shop. You know, if they had other, some other potential use that was in their mind, they could come back and include that in the, in the PD application. That's my recollection. Somebody help me out. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
Brian Manass, the planning, that is correct. You could specify the uses per the PD. So you can have additional uses. They could say all S H C I zoning.
I got two books to make. About three months.
Brian, were you done? Mary, you got a?
I have a question, final question.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I do, I do PDs, okay? I know what means standard zoning. I know what means PDs. I'm familiar with that completely. Sometimes I remember that I apply for a PD to allow some use and also the standard uses for that standard zoning. My question is, can I have a PD requesting the other labs continue with the same zoning uses that don't lose that one, only this particular piece of land beyond the PD with the requirements? And you got to keep that one, the other lands, the other property, the other side, the other lab to continue with the current zoning. If you, if you want, you can share my screen again. What I don't, can you share my screen?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, council, I, I, I believe we're venturing, venturing into an area that way off track in sense that we're asking, uh, the petitioner is now getting into a discussion of asking the council to make representations of future decision. Council, I believe she's made her position clear at this point. You could ask her to, you know, reiterate it or verify it, and then I believe, council, frankly, it's time for you to. And then I believe, counsel, frankly, it's time for you to act on whatever decision she makes.
Yes, you are right, sir. Ma'am, so you, just to clarify, you want us to move forward with a vote this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all we need to know. Thank you very much. We just want to stay the course and not get off track.
I really appreciate your time, okay?
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments from council members?
One comment and I'll finish, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Miranda.
Many years ago, the petitioner referenced other zonings in the area like the one she's applying for. Many years ago, when the neighbors, all the good neighbors in seminal heights, regardless of which part of seminal heights, came together and wanted to do the plan that's in fact, and now they sat down with Gloria Moretta and others in the zoning department and made a determination of how they were going to work it out. So those areas were mapped out with a planning of the city and the needs of the neighborhood based on the requests of the neighborhood. So the reference was made and could be made that we zoned those areas. Whether we did or not, I don't know. I don't know if it made a plan, and the plan might have been included in there when they named the lot numbers and so forth, and that's what they received. But no one, at no time that we individually, I recall, that we zoned those. I'm not saying we didn't, but I just don't recall it. That's all I want to make, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion to close this public hearing?
A motion.
Motion to close from Councilman Miranda, I believe, a second was from Councilmember Goode's. Any objection? No, by unanimous consent, this hearing is closed. Councilman Dingfelder, you had your motion on the floor, sir?
I don't believe it. I need to reiterate it. The motion stands as made, and I believe I had a second.
And who was the second again, please?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder and a second from Councilmember Goode's. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Vera?
I was going to ask, may I comment on the motion just really quick, just to?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I appreciate it, sir. Just to explain my vote, my opinion, and I didn't want to, how shall I say, put my hand on the scale, whatever you would have called it before. But we have here a proposal that meets city staff in Planning Commission. It's, I respect the sentiments put forward by our friend and colleague, Councilman Dingfelder. I'll be voting no on this motion. I think we have what is a passable plan here, in my respectful opinion. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Go ahead with the roll call vote again, please.
Okay, Viera?
No.
Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Maniscaco?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
No.
Motion carry with Viera, Maniscaco and Miranda voting no.
Okay, thank you very much. That settles that. We move on to item number 13. Item number 13.
Again, Mr. Chairman, that requires that all parties, the applicant and the interested persons who are going to speak and participate be sworn in and be placed on the screen.
Please raise your right hand.
Is the petitioner, is the petitioner there? I'm sorry.
No.
Mr. Crew?
The petitioner has access, needs to open his microphone and video.
Perhaps we need to state for the record the item number. There we go. Thank you.
Again, that's item number 13, SU2-20-05. Are there any other people who are going to be participating, Mr. Crew, to your knowledge? Ah, I see.
Okay, thank you, right. Yep.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes, thank you.
A question for the clerk. Have any written comments been presented in this case, in this file?
No, we have not received any writing comments on this item.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mary, are you going to be presenting?
I'm, I'm waiting to proceed.
All right. Has everybody been sworn in?
I believe so, yes.
All right, go ahead, please. Sorry, ma'am, go ahead.
Mary Sameniego, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. The item before you is SU2-2005. It's a special use two request for a place of religious assembly for the property at 6904 North Dakota Avenue and 1507 West Sly Avenue. I defer to the Planning Commission with their presentation.
Good evening. This is David Hay with the Planning Commission. I have been sworn. If I could share my screen, please?
If we could, I hear some background noise there. If we could mute the microphone.
Can you see my screen now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
This subject site is located within the university planning district and more specifically the Lowry Park Central Neighborhood. There is transit along this portion of West Sly Avenue. It's served by Hart's Route 45, and the property is in a level D evacuation zone. Here we have an aerial of the site. You can see the subject site is outlined in purple. This is Sly Avenue. We have North Rome. This is the police athletic field and then part of Rome and Sly Park to the southwest. Some light commercial convenience store type things to the west. To the south, you have the Tampa Bay Christian Academy and the North Rome Baptist Church, and then there are some office uses and other church uses down this portion of Sly Avenue. You can see to the north, it's predominantly single family detached in character. Here we have the future landing map. The majority of the subject sites represented by this pink color is the community mixed use 35. There's a slight sliver on the northern portions of the property, and then all the properties to the north are that residential 10, future land use category. To the south, we have some residential 20 by this light brown, and then the darker brown is the residential 35, and then the green represents the recreational open space. The applicant is seeking approval to redevelop an existing place of religious assembly and expand the associated parking lot within the Lowry Park Central Neighborhood. This proposal is below the maximum floor ratio allowable within the community mixed use 35, future land use designation. The Place of Religious Assembly also acquired a single family lot to the west and will develop it as parking for the site. The Place of Religious Assembly is located within the CMU 35 portion of the site and is located on a collector roadway, and it is generally compatible with the surrounding area. The surrounding area transitions again to single family detached north of the site and is designated RES 10. The parcel to the west, which will be developed as a parking lot, also has a split land use of CMU 35 and residential 10. To ensure consistency with pedestrian safety and consistency with the comprehensive plan, the Planning Commission staff recommends providing a safe pedestrian connection across North Dakota Avenue from the Place of Religious Assembly on the eastern parcel to the parking lot on the western parcel. Through an assessment of the character of the area, the Planning Commission staff has determined the proposed Place of Religious Assembly expansion would be an appropriate use of the site and is consistent with that R10 and CMU 35. And based on that, the Planning Commission staff recommends to you this evening that the special use request be found consistent with the provisions of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council members? No? All right. Next up, I believe we have the applicant.
No, sir.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sameniego, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, I need to make my presentation. If you could share my screen, please? Thank you. Mary Sameniego, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. Again, this is SU2-2005. It's for a special use two for a place of religious assembly in a residential zoning lot. The applicant, the application before you encompasses two separate properties. There's currently a place of religious assembly on the eastern portion of the site here. The applicant specific, the application specifically is requesting to add 1,000 square feet of building to the existing place of religious assembly as well as to reconfigure the existing parking lot and to add additional parking across North Dakota Avenue in this area on the western portion of the subject site. So to be clear to City Council, the entire special use two application site is this eastern portion that is in this quadrant here, which is the total building with the parking lot directly to its north, and then a secondary parking lot across North Dakota. The eastern portion of the property contains 19,602 square feet of commercial general zoning, which allows place of religious assembly as a permitted use. However, there's a small segment of the northern portion of this property that's in the RS 50 zoning district, which necessitates this special use two application. Similarly, the entire western portion of this one site is in the residential 50 zoning district, again, which necessitates the application of this special use two approval for a place of religious assembly. As far as surrounding areas there, let me show you. Sorry, let me go back. As I explained, the existing building would be here with a 1,000 square foot addition with parking and then a western parking lot. Here is the architectural renderings of what the building would look like. Here is a zoning map. Again, you can see this is the eastern portion of the site with the existing church use. Right here where my mouse is, is the zoning line for CG, and you can see this is that sliver I was referring to that is in the RS 50 zoning district. Also, here is the western portion of the site in red, which also is in the residential 50 zoning district. There's a larger neighborhood to the north, which is single family residential, and then a mix of both office and retail uses along this portion of West Sly as well as Rome Avenue. Here is a picture of the existing site from Sly Avenue. The existing site from North Dakota. Again, this parking lot would be reconfigured as shown on the site plan, and this small structure would be demolished. Here are the existing miscellaneous buildings on the western portion of the site, which would all be demolished to create the secondary parking lot. Here, and there are two adjoining houses to each portion of the properties to the north, so adjoining 6905 to the north as well as adjoining 1507 West Sly to the north. There are two waivers that are being requested, both related to transportation. One is to section 27132 to allow non-residential access to a local street. There are two driveway proposed cuts directly across from each other in this area on North Dakota. North Dakota is classified as a local street. And then the second request on, based on the total number of seats, which is 200, there are 60 parking spaces required, and they're asking for a waiver to reduce that number down to 50, which is a 16% parking reduction. Based on those two waivers, transportation did find this inconsistent, and however, Planning, Design and Development Coordination did find it consistent, and there are some revisions on the revision sheet for some minor changes between first and second reading as well as natural resources and stormwater also did find it consistent with some modifications between first and second reading to some small notes on the site plan. So overall, the development review and compliance staff did find this inconsistent, again, based on the transportation findings for non-residential access to a local street being North Dakota and the 16% parking reduction. Transportation and natural resources staff are available for any questions, as am I.
Do we have any questions from council members? Any questions? All right, hearing none. Applicant, please.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Ramon Enrique Moll, and I'm representing the applicant. I'm an architect working with the project. I think Mr. Hay and Mrs. Sameniego explain it very well in terms of what is what we are planning to achieve when it. I just want to talk about the, in terms of the institution, this division has more than 17 year operating in the site. They have been the flame to the community. We have letter for recognition from the Governor Rick Scott, and there has now been complaints about the function of the project. I think the idea is to enhance the location, the area with this building expansion and creating a better parking space. So that way, the, the effect to the community is going to be, and, and flowing nicer and with a better look of the, of the environment in the area. That's all I have to say. I think all the parts and pieces has been covered by Samen Diego and Hay. If you have any question, we are more than willing to respond to you.
Do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? You have three minutes.
This is Alina Sadiq from Planning and Development. There is no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
Not receive any registration to speak live on this item.
Okay, so that settles that. Any questions for the applicant at this time before I ask for a motion to close this public hearing?
A motion.
All right, we have a motion to close from Councilman Citry. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Goode's. If, unless there's any objection, by unanimous consent, I'd like to close the public hearing. All right, Councilman Miranda, if you wouldn't mind reading this item here, which is item number 13. You're muted, sir. You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. File number SU2-20-05. Order being presented for first reading consideration and order approving a special use permit as you approving a place of religious assembly in a CG commercial general in RS 50 residential, single family zoning districts in the general vicinity of 6904 North Dakota Avenue and 1507 West Sly Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, they're providing an effective date. This applicant has shown that the use is compatible and contiguous with surrounding properties, and the applicant has met the burden of proof that his competent substantial evidence would justify the granting of a waiver application and granting the waivers is consistent with the applicable general standard section 27-129, City of Tampa.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Goode's.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Shelby?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I neglected to do something that we did in hearings, and I didn't add this to my list of things to do tonight. Just for the purposes of asking a question with regard to tolling the time for the 180-day statutory requirement, I'd like to ask the petitioner if they waive the time limit on the record, if you can reopen it for that purpose, please.
Would open the hearing, Mr. Chairman?
Second, we have a motion to reopen this public hearing from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilperson Viera, unless there's any objection. By unanimous consent, the hearing is reopened. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. And for the petitioner, again, if you're familiar with the statutory requirement, 180 days for the development order, do you waive that 180-day time period on the record? Are you familiar with what I am asking?
No, can can you can you develop a little bit?
Um, Ms. Wells, would you be able to? Um, I don't have the um, the um sheet in front of me, but it's a statutory requirement on the Florida statutes. Um, Ms. Wells, can you explain it, please? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Thank you. Kate Wells, Chief Assistant City Attorney. So section one sixty six point oh three three of the Florida statutes, as well as section twenty seven dash one four eight subsection E of our land development code requires that applications that are to be approved through a quasi judicial hearing, which is the type of hearing we're having tonight, must be acted upon by city council within a hundred and eighty days of the application being deemed complete. Because of the extended waiting circumstances presented by COVID nineteen, a lot of these deadlines are not being met because the applications, we had to cancel some hearings, applications have been continued. So the city is in agreement to waive these timeline requirements, and we're just asking the applicant if they are also in agreement with that waiver, and that would allow um this to move forward this evening.
Yes, uh, we understand the circumstances, so I more, we are more than willing and happy the applicant here to weigh that.
Thank you.
All right.
Pardon, pardon?
That settles that, correct? We can now reclose this, or once again, close the public hearing. We have motion to close the public hearing from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro. Any objection? No, by unanimous consent, the public hearing is closed. Uh, Councilmember Miranda already read this item with a second from, was it Councilmember Goode's?
Yes.
All right, roll call vote then.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode's.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Maniscaco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held September tenth at five oh one PM.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We move on to item number fourteen. Go ahead.
Again, Mr. Chairman, that requires that requires um everybody who's going to be testifying, be brought up on screen if possible, Mr. Crew, and have them sworn.
Mr. Chairman, the petitioner for this item is not signed into the meeting. Uh, Su Ling has verified that a link was sent to him, but he is not currently signed into the meeting. Neither of the petitioners that registered are signed in.
All right, should we then move to the next item, item fifteen, and try to figure it out with item fourteen? In the meantime?
Yes, that would be good if we could hold item fourteen.
We're going to hold item fourteen until we get everyone connected. Let's move to item number fifteen. Item number fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, um, can we pull up? Mr. Crew, everybody who's involved in item fifteen.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, again, the petitioner is not signed in. The registered petitioner is not signed in to the meeting for item fifteen.
Wow. That's two for two, and those are the last two items on the agenda, and we've sent them the links, of course, and everything, and they haven't connected.
May I ask, may I make inquiry? Are there um people who are registered to speak other than the petitioner on either of these cases?
There are not.
So, and if do we know from at the convention center, is there anybody present at the convention center relative to these two items?
This is Alina Sadiq with planning and development, and there is no one here to speak on behalf of either of these items.
Hmm.
Mr. Chairman. Question from, Mr. Chairman, question from Councilman Ding Felder.
Councilman Ding Felder, go ahead.
Um, just a suggestion, whatever planner has been involved with these applicants, maybe we take a five-minute recess, let the planner call them on his phone and see, you know, just see what the story is.
All right, uh, we can take a five-minute recess. That means do not log out of this um virtual meeting. Do not, you know, do any of this sort. Just mute your microphone and mute your camera. We'll take a five-minute uh recess, and then we'll reconvene. Let's seven twenty eight. Let's say we'll come back at seven thirty five.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Opportunity to connect Councilman Vera.
Uh, Mr. Crew. Whoever.
Uh, Jim Crew, City Clerk's Office. The planning staff is trying to contact the petitioners, so they're doing that now.
Okay.
And and thank you, Mr. Chair. I I need to re, oh. Thank you. I I need to restart my computer. It says your computer's about to restart, so I'm going to hit it. So hopefully I won't be late. I'm on technology. I'm forty-two going on eighty-two. So um, we'll see how it goes. So just.
And if I can, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder for everybody uh involved is that um this hearing is going to be, this meeting is going to be continued to be recorded during this five-minute break. So please know that when you come back, you're going to be live and recorded. So please make sure you mute your mic and shut off your camera, and when you come back, just remember that everything say um is being recorded. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Seven thirty-five, that's six minutes from now.
You have something to say? Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm ready to swear.
Vera. Goods.
Yeah.
Carlson.
Here.
Dean Felder.
Here.
Citro.
I'm here.
Miranda.
Here.
And Manis Kalko.
Here. All right, let's start with where we at here. Item fourteen is unable to connect or we haven't gotten ahold of them, correct?
Correct, we're currently working on it.
Okay, so we'll start with item fifteen then. Go ahead if we get everybody sworn in.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Crew, is everybody on screen who's going to be on screen?
Yes, for this item.
Okay, thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, Madam Clerk, any written items?
No, the clerk has not received any written comments for this item.
Okay, thank you. And before we proceed, if I can ask the petitioner that because of the extenuating circumstances presented by the COVID-19 pandemic, the city agrees and asks each applicant to confirm your agreement on the record that the one hundred and eighty day timeline for the completion of quasi judicial matters that is set forth in twenty seven one forty eight E. And in section one sixty six point oh three three Florida statutes is extended. Do you agree to waive the hundred and eighty days?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I believe that's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Go ahead then.
Okay, staff will make their presentation. Mary Samaniego, this case REZ twenty twenty eight. It's a rezoning request from RS fifty to plan development for the site located at sixty four zero three North Packwood Avenue. I turn it over to Planning Commission if you could share their screen.
Hey, Planning Commission staff, I have been sworn. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
The subject site is located within the central Tampa Planning District and more specifically, the Riverbend neighborhood. There is transit located approximately seven hundred feet east of the subject site. The closest public recreational facilities are the Police Athletic League and the Roman Sly Park. That's about six hundred feet to the north. And the subject site is located within a Level C evacuation zone. Onto the aerial, here we have the subject site. This is North Carroll Street, which is unimproved right of way. And then you have North Packwood on the west. You have Fern to the south. You could see the general area. There's some remaining vacant lots, but the predominant pattern is single family detached in character. Onto the future land use map, the subject site and all the parcels around it are all that residential ten future land use category. You've got some rec open space represented by the green to the north west and then residential thirty five in the darker brown and res twenty in the lighter brown to the south. The proposal is to rezone the property at six four oh three North Packwood Avenue from residential single family fifty to a planned development to permit one single family detached residential unit. Staff has reviewed the application and found no adverse impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. The existing residential built parcels along this portion of North Packwood Avenue between West North Street and West Fern Street have a current density of six point four five units per acre. Proposed density for the subject site is two point nine six units per acre. These densities are within the range permitted consideration under the residential ten future land use category. Furthermore, the proposed plan development is similar in form, height, and scale to the surrounding residential uses found along this portion of North Packwood Avenue. The request supports policies in the comprehensive plan as it relates to housing the city's population. The comprehensive plan encourages new housing on vacant and underutilized land to ensure that an adequate supply of housing is available to meet the needs of Tampa's present and future populations. In conclusion, the proposed plan development is comparable and compatible with the fine grain development pattern along this portion of North Packwood Avenue, supports many of the housing policies in the comprehensive plan, and is consistent with the long range development pattern encouraged under that residential ten future land use category. And based on all that, your Planning Commission staff recommends to you this evening that this proposed plan development be found consistent with the provisions of the Imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, Ms. Samaniego, go ahead. And you're muted.
So sorry, so sorry.
No problem.
Um, REZ twenty twenty eight, again, it's a rezoning request from RS fifty to plan development for one single family lot. There are no waivers being requested with this. Here is the site plan. So this lot currently is only forty five feet and it's in a regularly shaped lot. And it goes about two hundred and eighteen feet deep to the unimproved Carroll Street right of way to the south. Back in two thousand, it appears to staff that back in two thousand and seven, the subject property, as well as the subject property to the south, were the result, the creation of an illegal lot split. That is why the existing lot is only forty five feet in width as opposed to the fifty foot width required by the existing RS fifty zoning district. Therefore, the only way to make this lot at sixty four oh three North Packwood Avenue buildable is to have it approved legally through a planned development. Again, it's for the creation of one single family house. The proposed setbacks are comparable to the RS fifty zoning district. Twenty from the front, twenty from the back, and seven on each side, as well as a comparable maximum height of thirty five feet. The only difference from this proposal and the RS fifty zoning district is a reduced lot width, again, from fifty feet down to forty five feet. And there are no waivers being requested. Here are the building elevations being proposed. Here's the subject property and the surrounding areas development. Most of the surrounding area, as you can see, is currently in the RS fifty zoning district. Right here, you can see the subject property in red and then right directly below it, where the arrow is, is the other illegally created lot back in two thousand and seven with from previous property owners. Here is the overall analysis area that we do when we analyze existing lot widths. I mean, this instance, a total of a hundred and two properties were reviewed and ninety six percent were greater of fifty feet wide or greater and only four percent were less than fifty feet wide. Similarly, the subject block has a total of eight lots and eighty eight percent of those are fifty feet or larger and only one is less than. Again, it's the other lot as a result of that two thousand and seven lot split. And then as far as the block face, again, all the other subject properties are larger than fifty feet in lot width. Here is a subject property taken from North Packwood Avenue. Here is adjoining properties to the north and to the south on the right side. And then across the street to the west is another single family house. Again, there are no waivers being requested. There are some minor changes between first and second reading with planning, design, and development coordination, as well as transportation has some changes. Some solid waste notes need to be added and stormwater note needs to be added. However, based on the inconsistent lot development pattern, again, there were very minimal lots that were less than fifty foot wide in the surrounding area, the block and the block base. Planning, design, and development coordination did find this inconsistent with the existing in historical development pattern in the immediate area. Therefore, we did find it inconsistent with the Land Development Code. Transportation is available for any questions as well as natural resources and I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Any questions? All right, applicant, go ahead. Please state your name for the record and begin your presentation. Applicant, go ahead, you can begin. You're muted, you're muted, sir.
Sorry about it. Can you give me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Adam Isasen. All right, so I apply for, from, with some property from RS fifty to PD like Samaniego State. And the proposed use is for a residential single family. We want to leave, we want to be in the house and live in the house. If you guys approve this application.
Okay. Any more details, anything else, sir?
No.
Okay, any questions from council members? Any questions from council members? Councilmember Miranda, I believe you're muted, sir.
What I'm looking here, when I'm looking here at the map, there's a lot of forty five, but then it goes just about from Packwood all the way to Carroll, the whole land. Uh, Ms. Samiego.
Yes, sir.
So the land, the first part of it is forty five foot deep and then it goes all the way from Packwood to Carroll?
Yes, sir.
And then it heads south, I guess, to Fern or something like that, then it head back around, is that it?
If you want to share my screen again, please, Jim.
I couldn't see it too well.
Does that help you, Mr. Miranda?
Yes, so in other words, the house is going to be built on the first part of Packwood of forty five feet?
Yes.
What about the land in the back?
It's just going to be part of their backyard, sir.
So then, in other words, they're using the narrow part for the house and the backside for a yard instead of using the big part for a house and the little part for a yard, am I correct?
That is correct, sir. Here's the site plan before you.
Thank you. Councilman Carlson, go ahead, sir.
Hi, Ms. Samiego, you said that, didn't you say that there was an undeveloped road in the back? Could that explain why they might be developing the first part instead of the second? And my second question while I have the floor is, considering that's RS fifty, is there a way to build an RS fifty house on this lot, the way it's configured now or not?
The reason why they're not building off of the Carroll Street on the back is per code, they would have to actually improve Carroll Street to count city road standards. They have frontage on Packwood, so they have, it's their option to request a driveway application and get a driveway permit off of Packwood. They, this is not a buildable lot because it was illegally created back in two thousand and seven and it, because it did not meet the minimum lot width of the RS fifty zoning district. So it is not a lot of record, it's an illegal lot split. Therefore, we cannot issue any development permits until the lot is legally created through an action. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right. Hearing and seeing no other questions here, do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item?
This is Angel, study with planning and development. There is no one here to speak on this item, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
And we did not receive any registration on someone to speak on this item.
All right, just a moment, we have fire trucks coming by. All right, anything else from the applicant? Sir?
I'd seen Samaniego say it all.
Okay, all right, any other questions from council members at this time, anything?
Room closed.
We have a motion closed from Councilman Citro with a second from Councilman Goods. Unless there's any objection, by unanimous consent, the hearing is closed. Who would like to take this item? Item number fifteen. Item number fifteen. Councilmember Dean Felder. Councilmember Goods, would you like to take this?
I got, I got.
Oh, you got it, okay, Councilmember Dean Felder.
Just had to get, dig through the paperwork, okay. I'll move in regard to REZ twenty dash twenty eight following ordinance presented for first reading. An ordinance representing property in the general vicinity of six four zero three North Packwood Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida. And more particular ordinance, section one, in zoning district classifications RS fifty residential, single family, to PD, planned development residential, single family detached, provided an effective date.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir.
Number one, does that include the revision sheet, Ms. Samaniego? That requires a revision in first and second reading, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Is that to be made?
Your psychic, yes.
Yes, well, I see her nodding. And number two is, sir, could you just talk about the fact that this complies with the comprehensive plan of the Land Development Code? Do you have that?
Sure.
Thank you.
I apologize. Yes, but the applicant admits its burden of proof by providing competent substantial evidence that the development as conditioned and shown on the site plan is conditioned and consistent with the comprehensive plan and the city code. But this, this project would not have any adverse impact on the public health, safety, and general welfare. I adopt the findings of Planning Commission staff and city staff reports and I don't believe there was any opposition, so thank you.
All right, and do we have a second to this motion?
A second.
We have a second from Councilmember Goods. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yeah, wait, yes.
Goods.
Yes.
Dean Felder.
Yes.
Manis Kalko.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Miranda.
No.
Motion carry with Miranda voting no. Second reading and adoption will be held in September tenth at five oh one PM.
Thank you very much. Now back to item fourteen, were we able to establish item number fourteen's applicant?
This is Ryan Manassi. I did get ahold of the applicant through phone. I believe Celine's trying to help him out getting him logged in. Celine, can you give us a status on that possibly?
Yes, Mr. Corso was actually logged on and he just logged back off, so I'm trying to get him back on.
All right, well, wait a minute on that.
Barry, Ms., your application's done, you can log off now.
All right, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question, Mr. Shelby?
Yes, sir.
If this Deputy Clerk Lucas can't get him on the virtual screen, can we do it by phone?
I don't believe we are set up to do that. This being a quasi judicial matter, it would be appropriate for people to be able to be seen and heard. That's the way this has been set up. For instance, the council's information, there were people who wanted to be able to phone in tonight. There is no phone in option for quasi judicial hearings.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any luck yet with logging in the applicant?
I tried several times reaching him by telephone, but it keeps going directly to his voicemail. I'm not sure T and I is trying to get ahold of him as well, but he was logged on at one point, probably about three minutes ago, and then he disappeared. So, however you want to proceed.
Mr. Shelby, can we take a ball we wait, the item of rescheduling or the rescheduling to that date that we're talking about and then Yom Kippur and all that?
Yes, sir, that would be, that would be fine. Unless there's a reason why not, I would think, counsel. My suggestion would be, and my recommendation would be, that you reschedule the meetings that were scheduled on Monday, the hearings that were scheduled on Monday, the twenty eighth, which is Yom Kippur, and reschedule those hearings that were set for Monday, November twenty eighth and move them to a new meeting date of October first at five oh one PM. That would be a new added night meeting on a Thursday, which would follow your regular session at nine AM. And then, counsel, what you can do if that you agreed to do that, then it would just be a matter of taking these hearings that were the plan amendment items, legislative items, numbers one through ten, I believe, and move those to the same evening of October first at five oh one PM. Put those first on the agenda and those should move quickly. That would be my recommendation. Of course, it's subject to council's approval.
I was looking at the dates and everything and I think October first would work at five oh one PM because those first ten items that were supposed to be for this evening, you know, they, you know, hopefully are not contentious or anything. So I, you know, even though we have a day meeting, I think it'll flow fine into the evening and it won't be an all nighter. So unless anybody has any objection or any discussion on that, October first, five oh one PM.
Move.
Second.
Who made the motion, was it Goods?
Yes, we'll move.
All right, we have motion to reschedule these items to October first at five oh one PM. Motion from Councilman Goods, second from Councilman Citro. Is there any objection?
Mr. Chairman, just if I can make clear for the clerk what it is we're exactly doing. We are rescheduling the items on today's agenda, items one through ten. We are scheduling, rescheduling those for, to appear first on the agenda on the evening of Thursday, October first, at five oh one PM. And we are also then rescheduling all the hearings that are presently scheduled for that are presently scheduled for Monday, the twenty eighth. Uh, because it is Yom Kippur, uh, council is rescheduling those hearings again to be heard on Thursday, October first at five oh one P M, and is then removing the October twenty eighth, excuse me, the September twenty eighth hearing day from the agenda. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I wanted to make sure I got my months right. So the September twenty eighth hearing date is coming off the agenda, and those items are being, uh, added to a, a new evening meeting on the first of October. Thank you, counsel.
Great. All right, Councilman Carlson.
How many total items is that then for that night, Marty? How many total items is that for that night?
Uh, it would be, it would, it would be, um, the ones we have scheduled for the twenty eighth, and that totals five re-zonings. And then what you have is what was scheduled for tonight, which were, um, ten items, but I believe eight of them were parks, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, Mr. Hay, is that correct, what we had on tonight? Or were seven of them parks?
I believe seven. Let me, let me check.
It sounds like that's enough for that night.
Well, that, that's pretty well, pretty much, pretty much the, the plan, the, uh, the, um, the comprehensive plan items on the parks can be taken, as you know, we've taken them as a group, and they've moved rather quickly. Of course, the ordinance have to be read individually, um, and we don't need full presentations because council's familiar with them, uh, from, I believe it was the transmittal hearing. These are all for adoption. Is that correct, Mr. Hay? Did I get that right? Let me take a look.
Let's see here.
Yeah, these are adoption public hearings. So they were previously heard by council, um, and, uh, one item, wait, one item is, two items are transmittals. Is that correct?
I have to find my agenda.
Okay. That's fine.
Assistant City Attorney, just for the record, we have two items that are transmittal public hearings that would go to the Department of Economic Opportunity if approved by council. On October first, the remainders are small-scale plan amendments. That would be adoption hearings. And in response to Councilman Carlson's question, that would be ten plan amendments. And it's a total of six quasi judicial hearings for that evening. But it actually would be a schedule similar to what was originally, uh, scheduled for tonight's hearing.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my, I, we've said this in other meetings, but just in case anybody's listening for the first time, um, it'd be, it's not about how late we go. It's about how late staff goes, but also, um, the public, uh, public gets really tired waiting until midnight. So just want to make sure that we're conscientious about, uh, not scheduling things that'll go too late. Thank you.
All right. So we have a second, and, uh, was there any, uh, objection? Anything else?
Can we have a roll call for that, please?
Let's take a roll call vote then, yeah.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes, yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. That settles that. Do we have the, the applicant on the line for item number fourteen?
Ryan Manassi, uh, we're still attempting to get them strained out. Um, we do have phone communication with him now, and I believe I, I just got him in contact or hopefully in contact with Celine in order to get the link and get up, um, available online.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Could I stop me if it be a new business, but I wonder, since we're talking about scheduling, if I could talk about September twenty fourth real fast, or do you want to wait till later?
Uh, why don't we, I mean, we're waiting here. We, we've been waiting a little bit. Why don't we just go to new business and take up these items now unless, I mean, unless you have something real complicated, but let's go with the new business. I'll start with you, Mr. Carlson. We'll go down the line. We get it out of the way.
Yeah, that's just a, um, a, a question on, as I remember it, on September twenty fourth, we have the, the C R B discussion, then we also have the police discussion, and then we have discussion of growth. And I think, I think the first two may draw the similar kind of audience, but the, the third one, the one about, uh, growth planning, that one is going to draw a different audience. And, and those two combined, I think, will draw, um, a, a lot of people. And there will be lots of public comments. So what I, my suggestion would be that we move the third one to another workshop.
Okay. Do you have a specific date you want to move it to on October or November?
I just thought about it as we were talking about just now. Does Marty or someone have a, a calendar on workshop?
Yeah, let me pull it up here. Workshop sessions, we have, uh, October twenty second, and then we have January twenty fourth.
Are you okay with, uh, October twenty second?
That's fine with me unless any other council members have any objections. No? So you want to move to, um, move, reschedule that third item to October twenty second, twenty twenty, nine A M?
I don't have the exact, I don't have the exact wording in front of me, but it's something related to growth management or planning growth in areas that, that want growth and areas that don't want growth. So just moving it to that October twenty second.
So moving the September twenty fourth items regarding growth and all that to October twenty second at nine A M. Okay, uh, that's a form of, of a motion then?
Yes, please.
We have a second from, uh, Councilman, uh, Goode's. Do we need to take a roll call vote on anything like this or no? Mr. Shelby? Let's take it just in case.
Let, let's.
All right. Roll call vote.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro? Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
All right. Anything else?
Chairman, may I follow up on Mr. Carlson's motion? Just so the council's aware, you have two other items unrelated to, um, the first issue that Mr. Councilman Carlson had raised. Just so you know, there's a workshop. I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Uh, if I can, just so you know, there is a discussion on, um, the legal department to appear and provide options as related to chapter fourteen, specifically addressing hours of operation amplified sound as well as separation. That is also on the twenty fourth. And again, later on, that workshop, uh, another workshop on the transportation department staff be requested to discuss parking in light of residential. So I just want you to know that that's all still, still presently scheduled for the twenty.
Those go together better anyway. Mr. Chair, do you want me to make another quick motion or wait?
Go ahead.
Uh, just that there's a, um, uh, um, I'd like to make a motion for a commendation for Peyton, uh, Maszonski to, uh, present him with, uh, on our, uh, a, um, a commendation for, uh, the Council on Honor Ceremony.
Please mute your, your screen, sir.
It's a, so this is an Eagles that we would like to, uh, give a comment.
You're going to give it, when are you going to present this at the, at the event?
Uh, yeah, yeah, outside, outside the meetings.
Okay, so, okay.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second from Councilman Ding Felder. Um, any, um, all those in favor? Is there any, uh, uh, objection to this? No? We'll approve that with the unanimous consent. Thank you very much. Anything else, sir?
No, but congratulations to Peyton. Um, winning Eagle Scout is a, is a big, um, accomplishment. So thank you, uh, for your hard work, and we look forward to seeing how you, how well you do in helping the community future. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilman Moreno, do you have any new business?
No, no. Uh, yes, I have one. Uh, the chairman, sometime back, uh, towards the middle of July, inner July, I believe I made a motion that the, when we canceled that meeting, uh, because it was not continued, it was canceled, that I asked that city to be responsible for fees, including postage to send out to the, the new, you know, when they had to reschedule, and I haven't heard from no one about that at all.
Does anybody have any answer to that? It was for, uh, us paying or see who would pay the city or whoever reimbursing the fees for the re-noticing since the meeting was canceled in July.
This is Kate Wells, Chief Assistant City Attorney. I knew that Carol Post has been looking into that. The first priority was to take care of the logistics, uh, for the virtual hearings, and that has been an ongoing process. But I do know that that is an item that she is looking into and will report back to city council.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else, sir?
I checked.
No. Councilman Citro, do you have anything under new business?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Ding Felder, do you have anything for new business?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as we came into this public hearing, uh, about comp plan amendments, and I had a long conversation with the planning commission staff, an issue arose about what does mixed use really mean in our comp plan and development code? And I, and it's come to my attention, um, I think it was last summer and more recently, that we really don't have any requirement or standard for mixed use. We give out bonus densities related when somebody says, oh, I'm doing a mixed use project, but at the end of the day, to them, mixed use might mean one percent commercial and ninety-nine percent residential or vice versa. Because it's my understanding, and David, I see your picture there. Um, it's my understanding that neither the comp plan nor the code, Kate, um, has a requirement, minimal requirement, threshold, description, or anything else that, uh, further defines what mixed use means. So, so it's in the eyes of the beholder. Anyway, with that said, um, I'd like to get a report, perhaps a combined report from our planning staff, our, the planning commission staff and working with legal to, um, to see what those three bodies, i- if they think it's a problem, um, and if so, uh, what they might recommend as, uh, some future solution. Um, no hurry on this, but I'll look at, uh, at least a preliminary report in, uh, perhaps ninety days. Mr. Shelby, I don't know when that would be.
Let's see, September, October, November. Uh, did you want, let's say, the first meeting in December then, sir?
Okay.
You wanted earlier than, oh, you wanted earlier.
Oh, staff report at a regular meeting, Marty.
Uh, then November nineteenth, November nineteenth is the last before the Thanksgiving break, and December third is the next one after that.
And November nineteenth is fine, and I'd like it to be, um, a verbal, in addition, anything they want to put in writing, I'd like somebody to appear in front of us.
Thank you. That's part of the motion then.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Ding Felder. The second was from Councilman Citro. Any objections on the motion? No? Unanimous consent. We, uh, we approve that. Thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Ding Felder?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Goode's? Mr. Vera?
Yes. Um, oh, there you go. I can be here. Hey, everybody. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just really two quick motions, if I may. Let me find the wording that I had for them. Um, oh, Lord. Um, well, one of them was, and this can be done in two or three weeks. You know, I, I recently read a, a news story on, uh, first responders and, and public employees who, um, acquired COVID nineteen and how local, uh, municipalities are dealing that, especially with first responders, our police and our firefighters who are often, uh, around folks, uh, with, with, uh, COVID diagnosis, et cetera. And we know that there's many of our police officers and our firefighters who are out right now, uh, due to COVID nineteen. I would just like, and I don't, we don't need a, a, a person report, just a written report to see how the city of Tampa is presently dealing with, um, first responders on, as it comes to COVID nineteen diagnosis and workers' compensation. Uh, you know, Florida statute four forty has a number of, of, actually, it's not under four forty. It's under a separate section for first responders in terms of presumptions of certain things being on the job. Um, you know, I, I would love to see such a bill like that come out for first responders and frontline workers for COVID nineteen from the Florida legislature. And I'll move on that later on, um, because I, I want to see what the status of that is in Tallahassee. Um, but I would just like to do a, a request for a written report regarding the city of Tampa's policy with regards to first responders who acquire COVID nineteen and any presumption that may occur, um, as a, that, uh, would have COVID nineteen being treated under workers' compensation as opposed to sick time, uh, if, if I may.
Second.
How, what date would you like that to come back, sir? How much time do you want to give the administration?
Two, three weeks. I mean, it's not rocket science, I think. Um, let's do two weeks. And again, it can just be, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair. Um, and it can just be a written report. I don't really think we need anybody here. Um, unless if they give us an entry we don't like, then, then we'll have some.
September third then, sir? September, September third, staff report written?
Fine with me.
This is Kate Wells. If I could respond to the timing on that, anytime city council requests by motion, written reports. We have internal deadlines by which, uh, the chief of staff would be looking at those reports. I would ask for some additional time.
Sure. How about, um, six, five weeks? That's fine.
Chair, would you like the seven, would you like the seventeenth of, of September or the first of October?
The first of October is fine.
Mr. Councilman Goode's?
Mr. Vera, if, if you wouldn't mind, uh, you know, I'm an advocate about police in far as well, but which report, if you mind, I'm friendly there to look at other general employees as well, just to get a general idea. I think the sick time you're out, I think that's just fair for all the, all the employees to figure out what's going on and get a general report if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure. Without a doubt. I, I, I don't know. I haven't spoken to Mr. Simon with A T U, um, and thank you for that, Councilman Goode's, in terms of, um, um, how many of our employees are out, um, and, and, and how much public, you know, in, uh, uh, interaction there has been. Um, but I can, yeah, I, I have no problem with that.
I've got some other folks that were inside the waste, who are out there with the public all the time, and, you know, issues like that. That's why I was concerned with that. But thank you again, sir.
Point well made, sir. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Vera. I believe Councilman Citro seconded it?
Yes.
Yes, sir. All right. Um, any objection on the motion? By unanimous consent, that motion is approved. Anything else, Councilman Vera?
Really quick. This was a motion that I did for a presentation that I guess got gone with the wind, so to speak, because of the, uh, the COVID era hearings. I had done a motion some time ago for, um, the staff to come, uh, report back to us on the status of what would be called a public safety master plan. Um, you know, Parks and Recs has been working on a master plan for Parks and Recreation, and something I motioned for a couple of months ago is to have the city of Tampa come up with a master plan, looking at all parts of our city, uh, in terms of our public safety needs. Um, uh, similar to what we're doing with, um, Parks and Recreation. You know, we, we saw a very vigorous push by Councilman Goode's uh, for additional fire help in his district thereafter, a very aggressive push in my end, uh, with regards to Station thirteen, um, help there and in the budget, uh, we're able to get designed for another fire station for North Tampa. You know, Station thirteen in the city of Tampa is among the fiftieth, fifty busiest, uh, fire stations within the United States of America, uh, right here in the city of Tampa. So we obviously have our work cut out for us. So, and, and I can do that in November. Um, I just think it's something that we ought to be looking at for the next budget, uh, when it comes to our, um, uh, public safety needs from a holistic perspective, and looking at getting the city to do a, a master plan type of analysis on, uh, on what's needed throughout the city so that we don't have to go piecemeal, and we can have everything before us. And November is fine. After the election.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro. Um, do you see a date there, Mr. Shelby? In November, after the election?
After the election would be the nineteenth of November.
How about that, Councilman Vera?
It's good. Let's hope we're all happy with the results.
All right. We have a motion for Councilman Vera for the nineteenth, I believe. Second from Councilmember Citro. Any objection to this motion? Hearing none, seeing none. By unanimous consent, we approve that. I have nothing for new business. Then there will be no new business coming up. Once we finish this final hearing, we're going to receive and file unless there's anything else to talk about, and we're going to adjourn. Having said that, item number, uh, was it fourteen? If we could begin, I know we have the applicant on the line.
And Mr. Chairman, if there's anybody else, Mr. Crew, if you could have, put them on the screen so everybody can be sworn in, please. Mr. Chairman, if there's anybody else, Mr. Crew, if you could have put them on the screen so everybody can be sworn in, please.
There are no others.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm that you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And have written comments, been received, also to this file?
The clerk office has not received any written comments on this item.
Thank you. A question for the petitioner, if I may, sir. Because of the circumstances, the extenuating circumstances presented by the COVID-19 pandemic, the city agrees and asks each applicant to confirm your agreement on the record that the 180-day timeline for completion of quasi judicial matters as set forth in 27148 E of the City Code and in Florida statutes, section 166.033, is extended. So my question to you, sir, on the record is, do you waive that 180-day timeline for purposes of having this hearing heard and continuing? Mr. Corso?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, we'll begin the presentation. Go ahead, sir.
All right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
We go to Mr. Manassi first. Go ahead, Mr. Manassi, and then we get to the applicant.
Council Ryan Manassi, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. Item number 14 is for the file REV 20-27 for the location 2509 Kenmore Avenue. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from RS 60 Residential Single Family 60 to RS 50 Residential Single Family 50. And I will go over to David Haye from the Planning Commission. Jim, if you can share his screen.
Good evening, council members. David Haye with your Planning Commission staff. I have been sworn. Can you see my screen?
Yes, it's, yeah, we can see it.
Okay. The location of the subject site is up in the University Planning District and more specifically the Lowry Park Central Neighborhood. The site is within proximity to transit. There's transit just located one block to the east. The subject site is not within, is not located within an evacuation zone. And again, the closest public recreation facility is Roman Slide Park. Here we have an aerial. This is Kenmore Avenue on the south, Lorraine Street to the north. To the east, we have Armenia Avenue. You could see the commercial, the neighborhood commercial and general commercial uses that are located along this corridor. Then when you get off of the corridor, there are it's predominantly single-family detached. There is some duplexes. Then we have the future land use map. The subject site and all these properties in this tan color to the east of St. Peter Avenue and to the west of Armenia are all in that residential 10 future land use category. Armenia Avenue and the commercial uses that you see on there are all that pink, which represents the community mixed use 35. And then as you move further west, you go into the residential 6 future land use category represented by the yellow. Proposal is to rezone the property at 2509 West Kenmore Avenue from residential single family 60 to residential single family 50. The Planning Commission staff has reviewed the application and found no adverse impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. This portion of West Kenmore Avenue excluding the subject site has a density of 5.76 units per acre. The proposal would allow for the consideration of a maximum of three single-family residences at an overall density of 8.82 units per acre, consistent with the density anticipated under the residential 10 future land use category. Furthermore, the proposed plan development is similar in form, height and scale of the surrounding residential uses found along this portion of West Kenmore Avenue. Like the other one, this request supports many of the infill policies within our comprehensive plan and supports that the the desire for the city to have an adequate supply of housing available to meet the current and present population. In conclusion, the proposed plan development is comparable and compatible with the fine-grained development pattern along West Kenmore Avenue, supports many of the housing policies and and is consistent with that long-range development pattern encouraged under the residential 10 future land use category. And based on those considerations, Planning Commission staff recommends to you this evening that the proposed rezoning be found consistent with the provisions of the Imagine 24 of a comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Shelby, yes, sir.
Forgive me for, this checklist is is lengthy, and I just have to have it in a more orderly fashion. I apologize to council, but I just want to confirm with the clerk, did we swear in the witnesses on number 14? I might have just asked about the waiver, and I don't know whether we swore in who intends to speak. Did we do that?
Yes, we did.
We did? Okay, thank you. My apologies, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next speaker, please.
Ryan Manassi, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. Mr. Crew, thank you for the screen. Once that gets up, if you guys would let me know.
Yes, we can see it. Go ahead.
Okay, so filed before you is REV 20-27, and again, that is for the property located at 2509 Kenmore Avenue. The applicant is requesting a rezon of property from RS 60 to RS 50, and the property currently includes six platted lots. Those are lots 10 to through 13, or I'm sorry, 10 to 13, and lots 38 and 39 of the Auburn Highland subdivision. The applicant has submitted proposed survey showing three lots be creating out of the six existing platted lots. Each newly created lot measured 50 feet in width and 100 feet in depth for a total lot area of 5,000 square feet for each lot. The three lots will contain a total site area of approximately 15,000 square feet. The property has two street fronts and is located three lots to the west of North Armenia Avenue and East Kenmore Avenue intersections with the north boundary located on Lorraine Street and the south boundary boundary located on Kenmore Avenue. The property currently has a single-family residential use on platted lots 12 and 3 on Kenmore Avenue and the vacant land on Lorraine Avenue. The subject site is surrounded by detached single-family residents to the north, south, east and west in the RS 60 zoning district. Staff did do a staff analysis on the development of the area, and Auburn Heights subdivision was originally platted in 1925 with lots ranging from 21 feet to 30 feet with depths ranging from 89 to 105 feet. Auburn Heights subdivision contains six blocks. The subject property is located on block 2 of the subdivision, again, lots 10, 11, 12, 13, 38 and 39. The subject application seeks to combine six original platted lots to create the three buildable lots. The overall, the overall area of analysis included portions of the Auburn Heights subdivision. The area of analysis included 93 total zoning lots. 55 or 59% of those lots have been developed with a width of 60 feet or greater, and 38 or 41% of them have been developed with a width of 59.99 feet or less. Pardon to the review of the existing development pattern of the subject block, which contains 13 total zoning lots. 10 or 77% of those lots have been developed with a width of 60 feet or greater, and 3 or 23% have been developed with a with a width of 59.99 feet or less. Now going to the 2,500 block of West Kenmore Avenue, which is both sides of the street, it contains 13 total zoning lots, and 11 or 85% of those lots have been developed with a width of 60 feet or greater, and 2 or 15% have been developed with a width of 59.99 feet or less. The 2,500 block of Lorraine Street on both sides of the street contains 16 total zoning lots, and 9 or 56% of those lots have been developed with a width of 60 feet or greater, and 7 or 44% have been developed with a width of 59.99 feet or less. The block base on Kenmore Avenue contains six zoning lots. Five or 83% of those have been developed with a width of 60 feet or greater, and 1 or 17% have been developed with a width of 59.99 feet or less. And then the block base on the north, which is Lorraine Street, contains seven zoning lots. Five of those or 71% of those lots have been developed with a width of 60 feet or greater, and 2 or 29% of them have been developed with a width of 59.99 feet or less. The conforming map on the screen shows the area of analysis for staff's conclusion. It will show you the 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 ranging of width and the total parcels that we provided for this review. The locational aerial map on screen is going to show you the property, which is surrounded in checkered red, and you have the Kenmore Avenue to the south and the Lorraine Street to the north. The current existing home is right located here where my cursor is, and this is vacant next to it to the west as well as which would be the rear, or actually would be a front to the north on Lorraine. Some subject sites or subject pictures of the site, the site on Kenmore Avenue, and this is the existing structure, and then just to the west, same property. Is my PowerPoint not being shown?
Brian, this is Kate Wells. It's still on the staff report.
No, it should be a PowerPoint. Let me. Yeah, it's the wrong screen. I'm sorry. One second, please.
There we go.
That's it. Okay. Sorry, I can't see the screen that's up, but let me go back through it real fast. The it was just the initial presentation, going through the staff analysis and the conforming map. This is all located in your staff report as well. The aerial map, which is the location of the property itself. And then I was getting to the staff photos. The subject site, West Kenmore Avenue, the the single-family residence that's currently on the property. Again, the the picture to the right is to the west, same property. This would be looking down left picture, Lorraine Street, the rear of the property, and this would be the east neighbor to the right, 2510 Lorraine Street. The west neighbor on Lorraine is 2512 Lorraine. The north is 2511 Lorraine. East neighbor on Kenmore is 2507, and this is the west neighbor on Kenmore, which is a vacant lot, Folio 102656.0100. South neighbor, 2512 Kenmore Avenue, and then 2510 West Kenmore Avenue, the other south neighbor. So based on the staff analysis, staff finds the proposed request for the rezoning inconsistent with the existing development pattern of the area. The development review and compliance staff has reviewed the application and finds the overall request inconsistent with the city of Tampa Land Development Code. Please reference the findings by Planning, Design and Development Coordination relating relating to the existing development pattern in the immediate area. Planning, Transportation and Natural Resources staff are available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions at this time from council members? No, all right. We go to the petitioner now. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I think Mr. Ray already explained everything concerning with the with what we want to do. Just to confirm what he said, my, you know, representing my, the owner of the property. That's what we want to do, you know, split the, make the the zoning change from RS 60 to RS 50 and be able to to split the the property on into three lots of 50 by 100 and be able to in the future build three residential houses.
Okay, and please state your name for the record. I don't, I don't.
My name is Guillermo Corso. I am the agent of the property owner, Jorge Conzuger.
All right, thank you very much.
You are.
Questions for the applicant at this time? Any questions?
From my, from the owner? No, he doesn't have any other question.
Or any of the board members for you? Any other council members, any questions now? All right, hearing none. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item?
This is ID who started with planning and development. There is no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Okay.
No.
Go ahead.
No, we didn't receive any public registered to speak on this item.
Okay, if there's anything else at this point, any council members have any questions? Can we get a motion to close the public hearing then? We have a motion to close from Councilman Citro, I believe, with a second from Councilman Goode. If there's no objection, we will close by unanimous consent. All right, Councilman Citro, if you would like to take this item. Councilman Citro.
Am I there now?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. File number REV 20-27. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance rezoning the property in the general vicinity of 2509 West Kenmore Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section 1 from zoning district classification, RS 60 residential single family to RS 50 residential single family, providing an effective date. And that the applicant has met the burden of proof with the competent substantial evidence that was presented before us. Compliance with the goals, compliance with acceptable goals, objectives and policies from the comprehensive plan and compliance with Land Use Development Code. Nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second to this motion?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Goode. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Viero?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Panis Calco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Adro?
Yes.
And Miranda?
No.
Motion carried with Miranda voting no. Second reading and adoption will be held on September 10th at 5:01 PM.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, that concludes the agenda. We've already done new business. If there's nothing else at this point, we have a motion receiving from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilmember Goode. Any objection? By unanimous consent, we have received and followed all documents. We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us. We'll see you Thursday. Good night.
Thank you.